Excellent. That was fairly seamless. Then this meeting, the committee, the whole is hereby called to order. We have a fairly regular standing policy that when people are in an audience to pay particular attention to certain items, we sometimes jockey the agenda around. The usual pecking order goes anybody who's being paid to be here gets to be released first because it's not that residents are free, but that residents are being informed about the community in which they live. Making people who are from other communities sit here for a while to learn about our community doesn't usually edify them very much. So, once all those people get their agenda items through, then we go to things that will have members of the audience who have particular interest. So therefore, the reason I'm saying that is that we're going to move item number eight. The street program recommendation to proceed will come up to item four just before the fire station and then everything else will be moved down accordingly, at least with the unanimous consent of the council. Is there any objection to adjusting the agenda in that fashion? Then seeing none, the agenda is adjusted. Therefore, the first three will proceed just as you see here on the agenda listing. So, starting with the Gulf Road project. I know Mr. Crumstock has a brief introduction from the staff on this one, so Mr. Crumstock, the floor is yours.
My brief discussion is actually for residents at home. Obviously, in your packet, all of you have the concept drawings, but for people at home, if you look at 2850, this is what hopefully, and again, it's a concept rendering, it might change a little bit, of the new 2850. This is from Gulf Road, beautiful glass. And then when you look at, looking from the toll road, you can see the old red kind of brick, and that's one of the other buildings. Again, the concept shows a beautiful glass. It's a real stripped down, it's a complete redevelopment of the property at 2850. Obviously, tonight, people might ask, why is it so important that we're talking about it? And again, 2850 is that top part, and then we actually have the new parking facility up at the left-hand side that they would be creating. But as everybody on the council knows, Brian Bond, city attorney, is back again, obviously to talk about the draft term sheet. It's still being developed a little bit, and it also helps us with the RDA, the redevelopment agreement that we have. And also, Robert Ruschlikie is back to actually talk about the setting the public hearing date and actually working on the TIF for this property. So with that, I turn it over to Brian.
The floor is yours, sir.
Thank you very much. It's good to see all of you tonight. As Barry indicated, there was a revised draft term sheet that was circulated in your packet. The two changes that I would like to point out to the council, the two changes that were made over the prior version that you've seen was, there was a request by the company to receive an additional $5 million, up to an additional $5 million of TIF assistance from the city in the event they acquire an additional parcel of property to the west of the parcel that they currently own, and that they construct a new 60,000-square-foot office building on that parcel. So their request is now, and you can probably divide it into two, it's $30 million for them to completely refurbish and rehab the existing 2850 structure, and then an additional, up to an additional $5 million for this additional parcel and then new office building that they would construct. The second item that I'd like to point out is that in the term sheet, the city will be undertaking the construction of what's been called Squibb Drive, which will connect Apollo Drive to Ring Road to serve as an additional point of access for vehicular traffic coming in and out of the site, but more significantly, for emergency vehicles coming in and out of the site as well. That construction would be paid for upfront by the city, but the way we're going to structure it is that the city will be paid up from the TIF 100% of their costs of constructing the road project before the company would receive any money from the TIF, making them whole, making the city whole in a relatively short period of time. So those are the only two things that I wanted to point out from the revised term sheet that was given to you. If you have any questions on the term sheet, I'd be more than happy to answer them. Otherwise, Bob can come up and talk about the TIF district itself.
I suppose we could break these into parts if we need to, and if there aren't questions right now, that doesn't preclude coming back after the whole presentation and bringing Brian back to the microphone. So are there questions about the term sheet specifically on what he's presented at the moment? Mr. Cannon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If they proceeded with this other 60,000-foot building, what would they do for parking there? Would they add to the garage that they're proposing?
They would have to still meet the current parking requirements of the city unless those are otherwise modified through the PUD process.
So is this the parcel that would get destroyed? There's a building on there right now?
Correct.
Okay.
There's actually parking currently, level parking where they're going to be putting the parking garage.
Okay. And do you have any, even a ballpark estimate of what the road construction would cost us because we've got to come up with the money upfront to do it?
I will defer to...
Even a ballpark high and low?
Yeah. The high would be a million dollars, the low is about a half million dollars, and again, we haven't engineered it. We have certain discussions with the people to finish up Squibb. Remember, under Squibb Drive right now, we have the water main that looped that final area. But then, again, and Bob, when he comes up to talk about the TIF, obviously during, obviously the process, the TIFIT would be established, and then 2016 would be collecting money. We'd be doing the engineering and then probably constructing it in 2017. So by that time, revenue into the TIF would actually be available to use that money. So hopefully, there is no out-of-pocket from the city because the TIF would be funding that at that point in time.
And does the TIF reimburse us that year?
We're hoping so because once the money is received, we can do the expenses and actually, we have to show that when we do the GRBs each time that we have those discussions with all of our taxing bodies.
Okay. And then you had mentioned also that it would be up to $5 million. What's the criteria of where it would, where would it end up?
Well, because right now, it's what I would term a spec building, a speculative building. We don't have any hard engineering or architectural costs for the expense of the building, so we would have to just do the normal vetting of the numbers, much like we did for the rehab of this current structure, determine that, to make sure that, you know, the city's not providing them with too much incentive.
So I mean, because when we talked about this originally, we were only talking about one building, so this is a complete addition to what we were talking about.
Correct.
Okay. So we need to assume that it's going to be $5 million?
It's going to be up to $5 million in incentive.
Okay. Thank you.
Further comments or questions just about the term sheet? Mr. Crumstock.
I'm a little remiss, but I do want to say that there are Gallagher representatives here tonight, just in case if anybody has some additional discussions, but really, staff is trying to deal with this mostly. They could also do their friendly face, but that's up to Brian, too.
I know a number of folks have, on the council, have met in the meetings that kind of started this whole process, those who had one-on-ones or twos-on-ones, or however we choose to describe it. So the faces are indeed familiar. Further questions or comments about specifically the term sheet? Mr. Judd?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And then Mr. Pranay.
If I could just get clarification on the term sheet, I guess it's section E. I'm not sure how it shows up in here, but it looks like the last, start of the last sentence on the first part of that to the second one and number one, it says the annual amount due, the city shall be 50K increased by 3% for each year the TIF district has been established.
Correct.
Is that 50K in addition to what we, whatever it is?
Yes, that's an annual administrative fee that will be taken out of the TIF each and every year, increased by that inflationary amount, prior to any payments going to the company.
All of our TIFs pay an administrative fee.
Okay, but that, so that's not, that doesn't have anything to do with the stepped-up basis that we had bantered about or talked about at a period of time?
No.
Okay. So that's just admin fee. And then the other question I had was the, if I'm reading this right, let's just assume that it's just the one building, so 24 million, and then it's going to be one or a series of taxable notes that we're going to, you know, I guess, give to the company or issue to the company?
Correct.
Kind of help me understand that process in the sense that it's attached to a 5.5% interest rate?
Correct.
Which we talked about before, which is much higher than our cost of capital, and I'm assuming it's higher than their cost of capital. It might not be higher than their cost of, you know, their, the return on equity that they want, but I have to believe Gallager's are borrowing money at substantially less than 5.5%. So...
Correct.
Just curious, so we're going to issue a bond for 24 million essentially?
It's not a bond, it's just strictly a note that's issued against the future income stream of the TIF district. Oh, I'm sorry. Right. It's going to be a taxable note, it's not a bond, it's not a general obligation of the city. The only thing it's secured about by is the future income stream of the tax increment coming into the TIF district.
Right, and the 5.5% is attached for the purpose of?
Of getting them to the $30 million figure that they've got. It's going to be capped at $30 million regardless. Probably if you ran the interest at taxable rate of 5.5% in that $24 million number, you'd probably get closer to 30 or 35 million just on its own, but it caps at 30 million.
Right, and then in number two, they can assign this note, so they can essentially sell the note and get their cash upfront, so they could sell it with a 3.5% rate?
Right.
And give it to some, basically, give somebody 2%.
They can discount it to a lender and then get cash upfront for the note.
Okay, yeah, I mean, this is, that's, was a hang-up of mine before and continues to be, just to be upfront and honest with everybody. You know, hey, I don't know why the city would want to do that. I mean, I understand the concept of wanting to get the things done and wanting to help Gallagher out, which I'm interested in, but having Gallagher go sell the note to, you know, PIMCO and then, you know, we pay them 2% just for the, holding the note, that, that's not something I think that the residents should be picking up the tab for. We suggested before, we should be doing it as a pay-to-go, but obviously, that is not something that they were...
Again, the provisions that are in the term sheet have not, I mean, we can continue to negotiate the provisions that are in here. Ultimately, these will transfer to redevelopment agreement, which will be approved by the council, and to that extent, we can certainly negotiate that provision with them.
I mean, that's something that I've been, you know, I said, well, we originally had the one-on-ones, I've said again, the last com meeting we had on this, you know, is another thing, but it's not material at this point in time to any question about the term sheet, so I'll bring that up later. Thank you.
Mr. Pranay, you were next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Alderman Judd answered one of my questions about the 50,000. When this first came forward, I had expressed the fact that this was a lot of money. I did not like the fact that the terms were so long. I like, I like the fact that it's now down to 15 years. I'd like to see a shorter period, and I will make this comment. The business community gets upset with government when they feel that we're in their way. However, when the shoe is on the other foot, they seem to be more than happy to come forward and see what they, what government can do for them. So I'm, I like the idea of the project, I like the idea of, the idea, the idea of what it will do. I still think it's a very rich package. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Judd, my apologies, one question, just to the Squibb, just so I'm on the same page with everybody. Let's assume Squibb Drive costs a million bucks. The numbers are relevant. Does that mean the total TIF will be 31 million, a million to us and 32 to them, or does that mean it'll be a million to us and 29 to them?
No, the TIF continues for that 15-year term limit, for that time where that is actually in place, and Bob will go over this again, for those 15 years, any of that tax increment is coming in. So hypothetically, let's say that the TIF takes in $40 million, that would be a million dollars to do Squibb, 30 to 35, depending if the building comes in, that extra increment, A, we could do the wellhouse over there, anything that's in that TIF area. So, A, we do not know how much that TIF for that limited time with TIF increment is actually going to estimate. This would also be, just like when we had the TIF number one, there was more money accumulated in that, and that's why it was dispersed to the other location. So we don't have a top of what that 15-year increments could potentially be.
Right, so, no, I get that, but what I'm saying is if it's exactly 30, does that mean it's a million to us and 29 to them?
The first million dollars is out of us, yes.
Okay, that's, I just want to make sure, just so I know where the numbers are coming. Thank you.
Further comments or questions on the term sheet specifically? Then seeing none, Mr. Ruschlikie, would you like to take your turn next?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Just to add on to what Brian said in some of the questions that were raised by Alderman, if the city decides at this point, I think in part of your packet was a resolution that set up a joint review board hearing for the TIF process, as well as a public hearing. Over the next three or four months, the plan for this area would remain a draft. It's basically going to set up some umbrella points or parameters, and those would be the location, you know, from a geography standpoint, what are the parcels that are included in the area? Once you start this thing, they really can't be increased, it has to be that area. That budget that's in the TIF plan, which is a not-to-exceed budget, would also be set in stone, so to speak, and the land uses in the area, which at this point, we're talking about primarily commercial office parking and some city-related public uses, those are set forth. So that plan would be presented to the taxing districts if the city, at their March 10th meeting, considers that resolution. Two things are set up by that resolution by state law, which you have to do in any kind of TIF designation, which you've done in the past on several of your other tips. First, you set up a joint review board meeting in which the taxing districts are invited, and they comment their advisory role. Ultimately, the city council makes all the final decisions on the TIF, but their input's important, and we would present the TIF proposal to them and get their input over a 30-day period. Secondly, there'd also be a public hearing set up for late May in which notices would be sent out to all the residential addresses within 750 feet of the district. Again, all the taxing districts are notified, the taxpayers are record, and then there's two general newspaper notices which are published, all leading up to the public hearing as a part of transparency of the process in order for the city council to get the input. You cannot take any action at that May meeting if you choose, again, to follow that schedule. There's a cooling off period in which you would incorporate any comments from the general public or for the other taxing districts as it relates to the proposal. And then you'd have to wait a minimum of 14 days, but no more than 90 days after the close of that public hearing in order to designate the TIF. Concurrently with the review of the TIF by the taxing districts and the city council, you would also have work on that term sheet. You know, Brian Bowe alluded to some of the basic business parameters, and the input, again, from the city council, I think is a good point as it relates to the, how that note could be assigned and under what conditions. It could be assigned at something, obviously, for the city to consider. Concurrently, over this TIF process, you'd have a review of those business points and draft redevelopment agreement, which really is the contractual basis for any kind of arrangement between Gallagher and the city of Rolling Meadows as it relates to the TIF. I think you've set out some preliminary parameters that are important as to the amount, which is a not-to-exceed amount regardless of whatever the interest rate is. There is a cap in the term of the TIF as well. There'd also be provisions, as you see in there, regarding the uses on the property, as well as the jobs, which are, again, are important as it relates to the public benefit accruing to the property, which, you know, at this point, reasons it qualifies would be conservation area. We've looked at the work from Ernst &amp; Young. In our view, you have the qualification factors, there are six basic factors identified, all of which have contributed to the need for the TIF. The longstanding vacancy, the parcels, some of it a little more sustained in the larger building than the smaller building, features of obsolescence as it relates to both the age of the buildings and the condition of the buildings, and then the loss in value of the properties combined have fallen by almost 60% in the last five years as it relates to the valuation of the property and their use. So the TIF, again, under state law, these are the kind of conditions that you would have to have to be present. There has to be a nexus between the factors and what it is that the city would hope to accomplish. In this case, it'd be the reuse of the building and bringing it back to productive use and occupancy over the short term in terms of the requirements of the redevelopment agreement. So again, you know, the consideration for the city relates not only to some of the general parameters of that term sheet, which are not set in stone, obviously, any input from the city council would be taken in over this three- or four-month period as we hash this out, but what you would really be considering is the ability to go forward on the formal TIF, which is important because each step is kind of lockstep. It sets up the next one. You have the joint review board, and then 45 days after that, you have the public hearing. After the public hearing, there's a certain period of time, that 14 or 90 days to adopt the ordinances. So all those are kind of set up by state law. So to the extent that the city sets up that process, it basically puts you down the road as it relates to the ultimate designation of the TIF. It doesn't commit you to that. Plan is a draft over the period of time, and you do have to bring in the input of not only your taxing districts who are impacted by this, but also the general public as well as the city council. So basically, it's a process, plan is a draft. It allows for the state law conditions to be met in order to position yourself that if you choose to go ahead with this transaction, you'd be legally able to do it because you've complied with all the requirements that are state law. So that's big picture, Mayor, as it relates to the TIF.
So, Mr. Ruschlikie, my interpretation of what you're saying then is, for purposes of this evening, the straw polls that we take are merely in favor of keeping this ball rolling. It's not a vote to say, these are the parameters that, that I necessarily want to marry myself to tonight. There's plenty of time to keep those things going.
You've got three, four months.
Yes, sir. It's, this is just, we're satisfied that we're in a ballpark where a settlement can be easily obtained between the parties, and we're just going to keep the ball rolling. Is that correct?
That is correct, sir.
Fair enough. Are there questions or comments for Mr. Ruschlikie? Mr. Crumstock?
No, but I just wanted to thank everybody who was here, and again, if anybody else would like to say something, they can, but we are continuing to work on it. You will see Brian and Robert Ruschlikie every so often, but again, the first thing that you're going to see is this resolution that is in the packet to come back because it does start our processes, we continue going, so.
There is no obligation, but Gallagher folks, would anybody like to just come up and say something, if you'd like?
Do I stand here or do you want me to...
If you wouldn't mind, please come to the mic.
So, my name is Cara Richardson, and I work for Arthur J. Gallagher. I am working on this project for Gallagher, heading, heading up the process. I want to start by saying Gallagher isn't new to your community, we're coming back to your community, and it is a very conscious decision to come back to Rolling Meadows.
If it helps, Cara, yesterday at the State of the City, when we talked about you guys, that's exactly the way we phrased it, is they're looking to come home to Rolling Meadows.
Exactly. So even so much as, as we try to start planning the building, our CEO was a much younger man in 1991 when we left there, and he was on the fifth floor of the building, and when we move back in again, he will be on the fifth floor of the building. So he's a man who knows where he came from and wants to come back, is what I would say. The process of working through this TIF with you, the building is a building that's in bad shape. I mean, I wish there were another way to say it, but it's an expensive, expensive rehab. Every piece of glass has to come off of it, all of the piping has to come out of it, you know, the elevators have to be redone, the roof is gone. I mean, there's a lot of work that needs to be done to this building, and at one point, somebody said to me, wouldn't it be less expensive to build a new building? And the answer is honestly, at this moment, I can say to you, it would be less expensive to build a new building. And so, you know, our commitment is to make Rolling Meadows our corporate home. Our commitment is to provide a place that we can grow, and we mentioned briefly a second building. That really is a result of the fact that Gallagher is growing, and as we look forward into the future, we believe that we, we would see ourselves needing to have a second building on the campus that would allow us to grow more than we are currently contemplating. And if you look at the term sheet, ultimately, we see ourselves being 2,200 people as opposed to the original count that we had. And so, so we are growing very rapidly, we are excited about moving to Rolling Meadows, and we hope that the partnership that we've started with Valerie and Barry will be one that we can move forward with over the next coming months and years. So, thank you.
Thank you for taking the time to come out tonight. Are there any final comments from the council on this item? Mr. Judd?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just, you know, as you've requested in the past, and, you know, to be upfront and honest and tell people what, where you come from or whatever, you know, I, when it's originally started, I had three basic issues. The one was the interest rate, you know, the 24 million, I'm not super opposed to, I get it that, you know, this building's needs help and whether or not, you know, people can make the argument whether or not Gallagher actually technically needs help in the size of the company, it is or not is irrelevant. It's just been a practice of governments to do this, even though I'm not super enamored with it, I'm not super opposed to that portion of it. But the 5.5% interest rate, you know, that doesn't sit well with me. The 24 million principal note, that's one thing, but you know, if that thing gets closer to the 3% range, I think that's more reasonable. That doesn't mean we jack up the principal amount, make it 25.6 million to make it 30. That's, that's not, that's not the way it works in my book. I've stated all along that I'm fine with that building. My concern has always been adding another building. I do understand the argument that they, they might be increasing and whatnot. That would probably be the largest stumbling block for me in the sense that I think now we're kind of morphing away a little bit from what the intent of the TIF is, in my opinion.
Now, if I might, Mr. Judd, I believe the way that you have signaled this intention before is talking about a building being perhaps put on that property, shoehorned in in a place right now where there is no building that exists. Is that correct?
Well, they were originally talking about tearing down that parking, that other building, so...
Okay, that, that's what I was wondering, was the, the idea of an existing building also going through a rehab or being taken down and rebuilt, does that, does that weigh in your thinking at all, just so that people know what...
A smidge, but not...
Okay.
I guess I'm not saying this is a complete deal killer for me, but it's definitely not pleasing to the eye.
Well, I had seemed to recall that the concern as originally expressed was, you know...
Selling a portion of it.
Yeah, what's, what's to stop something else going up and so forth and so on. I think the, the idea that the neighboring building might be purchased, I was wondering if that allayed any of the concern or not, and you have said it does not.
Not, not a lot.
Fair enough. That's all I'm looking for. Thank you.
And then we had talked about a stepped-up basis, which, you know, the 50,000 is great, that it's, it takes care of the admin fees. I don't know if that's a, a common practice that we have or not, but, you know, the whole process in my mind is to, you know, get some, some sort of additional revenue for the city itself. I don't see this, that addressed in the term sheet. I'm not 100% positive that it can actually be done, but you know, maybe it's something as simple as changing that 50 to 100 so that we get a little additional revenue to the city for the effort that, you know, the residents are giving up. So I'm not opposed to the site-specific TIF, I'm not opposed to the principle of 24 million, you know, I'm just kind of opposed to those other three things. So just, as of right now, I have no qualms about moving forward, but those are going to be things I'm looking to see changed and... to be things I'm looking to see changed and, you know, the biggest one that I see at least at this point in time is the, is the second building being a stumbling block for me. So, thank you.
As you mentioned at the beginning of your comments, yes, we do certainly appreciate the signaling of intentions early and I thank you for doing so. Further comments from the council before we close item one? Then seeing none, we'll call item number one closed and we'll move to item number two. On Lexington, Mr. Crumpstock, is there a staff introduction for this one?
Really a brief staff introduction. John Anglin, Director of Land Development at Lexington Homes is actually here. I'm going to give him the wireless because he has some boards to show you. We don't have a PowerPoint to show you, but for all the residents, hopefully you can hear him as he talks about this 54-unit townhome community that's being built at the old AMF location. And John's going to start up there and then when he starts walking, I'll give him the room up.
Right. Thank you, thank you very much.
Fair enough. Welcome back to our microphone. The floor is yours.
Thank you for having me. The intent, again, my name is John Aganlan with Lexington Homes, Director of Land Development. The intent is just to give you a very, very quick overview of where we've been and where we're going. It's been a little quiet out there, but we've been doing a lot of work behind the scenes to get ourselves ready to start demolition and site improvements on the site. So, over the last three or four months, we've been working on final engineering. We've worked with staff, had a couple different revisions, comments and resubmittals, all very typical. We've prepared permits for the MWRD and the IEP. Staff has signed off on those permits and we've made those submittals to those other governing bodies. So the permits have been submitted to others and they're being reviewed now. One of the issues that we had when we were last here was through the stormwater management, we had a underground stormwater vaults and it was actually drained through a pump system. Staff wasn't real comfortable with that. They wanted us to search out alternatives. We did, we came up with a, an alternative. We were going to lay a new storm sewer through a portion of the library property, through the library parking lot. And we've designed that, staff has approved it and we've met with the library board to discuss an easement agreement through that property. I actually presented before the library board last Tuesday. We have a draft easement agreement in process and I expect to be back before them in a month, the first Tuesday of next month, actually. So, that's going very well. We've applied for a model home building permit through the building department. We've had one round of comments on that. We've resubmitted, so we're back in. And we would like to start a model building, a model home out there in the next 30 days or so. As far as the demolition on the project, I've submitted some stuff to Valerie. It's probably been distributed to you, a schedule, some information on the recycling that we're planning to do as part of our demolition and notification to the neighbors. We've notified the neighbors that we're going to start demolition here imminently. We've asked any cars that have been parked, a lot of people have been parking on the site over the years. We've notified them and asked them to stop doing that in the next week or so because we're going to fence the property, we're going to start the demolition and we're going to fence the property. So, it's not really a problem, we've just, it's just time for everybody to kind of clear out. We've been working on the dry utility disconnects, the ComEd, NICOR and AT&amp;T. We expect those to be cut off in the next 30 days. And I also expect to start asbestos remediation a week from yesterday, so next Monday is what we hope to, hope to get started. I mentioned some recycling and salvage. Part of any demolition project is the recycling materials, the, obviously the metal, the copper, aluminum, things of that sort will be pulled out and recycled. The concrete foundations and footings, we plan to take that out, pile it up, crush it and use that crushed material back on site as trench backfill as we're laying underground utilities, road base, things like that. The asphalt, we intend to mill the asphalt, pile it and again, use that as part of our road base. So, we're recycling not only the steel and the aluminum and copper from the building, but also the other building materials that have been there for all these years. We're planning on recycling them and reusing them. I submitted some information on the crusher and on our staging plan and things of that sort. Also in your packet was information on our schedule. That's our best intended schedule at this date. Obviously, things change, but we're very well through the process. We expect the permits to come together. We expect the weather to improve in April and start earthwork and underground utilities. Start three or four buildings this year. We do expect to have a model building up and open late summer, early fall. We expect to start a couple of, at least two production buildings so that we'll have 10 to 12 deliveries in 2015 also. So I know I ran through that very fast, trying to make it quick for you all tonight. Again, it's just an opportunity to talk to you about where we've been, what we've been doing and what we intend to do here this spring.
I guess I would just start with the comment that once down the block from this property, Ray's Auto started becoming Comets. Generated a whole lot of very positive feedback from folks. Wow, something's moving, it's really nice to see something moving. I'm sure we'll be due for a second wave of that, thanks to the efforts of you guys. And as people start to see the fencing go up, maybe some will be disappointed not to park there anymore, but people will really feel that there's movement happening out here on Kirchhoff Road and I think that will be very well received.
That's, we've only heard good things, people that stop by our sales office. We are open for sales, we've been open for about 30 days. A lot of neighbors stop in to see what we're doing, what's going on. And all we hear is good things. They're very excited to see some change on the site and see some new life on that site. All good news. Nobody's complained.
Questions or comments from the council? This is largely an informational item that doesn't require direction, so.
Mm-hmm.
Then we'll simply close it there.
Thank you very much.
We thank you very much for taking the time to come out and thank you for bringing us such good news.
Thank you.
Then with that concluding, item two, we'll now move to item three. This is an item that's kind of back again after the council gave a little bit of direction on this the first time. The two signatories on the sign-in sheet from green signs are Mr. David Williams and Mr. Joseph Mancino. Mr. Crumpstock, is there a staff introduction for this one?
No, we're just going straight to the President, David Williams.
Fair enough. Mr. Williams, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for hearing our presentation tonight. It'll be relatively brief, kind of as introductory to a very minor modification that we would present, an amendment to the city code to allow for a sign that we would propose to build on Route 53. It's a modification, Chapter 122-156, to the extent that there's a modification of the district boundary. So I have a very brief presentation that I'll walk through. It'll probably take 10 minutes and, you know, questions, et cetera, that we can have thereafter then, so. So I wanted to start briefly with the description of who we are. We are a digital outdoor advertising company in the city of Chicago. We're unique in some respects, innovative in others. We sell our signs through customized audiences with TAB audits. TAB is referred to in our business as the Traffic Audit Bureau. It's much like Nielsen or Arbitron in terms of how outdoor advertising is rated. We do this primarily through a digital 10-by-10 network in the city of Chicago using advanced technology, automated programming and day-part messaging. We also, because it's a digital network, we can allow for instant postage or posting of a, of an ad. And we allow for webcam POP. POP stands for proof of performance. It allows for us to, with an advertiser, display an ad through a webcam to allow them to see the ad that's displayed on the digital sign. We have a number of 10-by-10s, as I mentioned. This is one of our installations on Beltwood. It's a digital 10-by-10. It's using a technology that's based on a three-unit LED technology. It allows for ads to be displayed in a very high resolution within the locations that we have. We are also a company, the name gives us away a little bit too, we are a recyclable and renewable energy use company. That is, that all the ads that we do, the digital ads that we do are used through a certifiable renewable energy source. We do have static advertising. We do these through what we refer to as an EcoFlex. They're all recyclable vinyls that are posted. We have a recycling program for those. Our office is Energy Star rated and our sales department primarily is paperless. These are the locations that we operate currently in the city of Chicago. Static locations, as you can see, are designated by the red dots and we have a number of digital 10-by-10s, as you can see. These are the locations that we operate in more of a conventional sense, billboards that are operated throughout the Chicago area and a number of them that are currently operating both in the digital and the static form. So, the Arlington Office Park, which is the subject of our discussion tonight, the address is 1835 1951 Rowling Road. The need that we have worked with the property owner to define is a pretty acute need. It's an older 103,000 square foot office park. It's about 65% occupied with short-term leases, currently experiencing a negative cash flow, very high upkeep costs. And it is a property requiring increasingly costly improvements. They need to, the property owner needs to generate additional revenue to improve the property, to attract new and longer-term tenants. And one of the best options that we determined, he determined, was to build an outdoor advertising sign on the property. This is a sign that would be compatible with the other signs in the area. It has the least amount of impact for the other, for the property in the surrounding area. It currently is legal from a state of Illinois standpoint with a permit and requires only a minor, relatively minor change to the city of Rolling Meadows code. And through the agreement that we have with the property owner, it's a percentage rental agreement, it provides for the highest potential income so that the improvements that he chooses to make to the property can be done. The improvements consist of pavement maintenance, enhanced landscaping along the right-of-way Route 53. A lot of the landscaping that exists there currently are trees that are in need of removal and some additional shrubbery that would need to be removed and replaced. Improved lighting in the property and added security cameras as well. So the amendment that we propose is an expansion of existing language, the location of your sign over lay district that currently exists on the west side of Route 53. We propose language in the highlight and underline that would read "An east of and adjacent to Illinois Route 53 expressway from the center line of Euclid Avenue terminating 1,300 feet north of the center line of Euclid Avenue." It would allow for one additional off-premise advertising sign in a digital format. We would propose to do this sign in a smaller sign face size. Neighboring signs in your current ordinance allows for signs that are 20 by 60 feet in size. We would propose to do this as a 14 by 48-foot sign face. Both sign faces, as they would be proposed, would be digital LED signs and all other requirements of Section 122-156 would be maintained. That would, of course, minimize the impact to any of the citizens of the city of Rolling Meadows. The income to the property owner to allow for these improvements would enhance or be enhanced by the addition of a $15,000 or $50,000 impact fee that we would propose to pay to the city of Rolling Meadows. And the billboard itself, as you can see from the drawing here and the survey that Barry posted on easel, it shows the location at the extreme northwest portion of the property, approximately 1,020 feet away from the residential area to the south. The sign would be a 60-foot overall in height digital billboard. And this is a copy of the IDOT permit, of course. We have the IDOT permit and this just signifies that it conforms currently with state ordinance and state law. This is a duplicate also of a sign that we operate currently in the city of Oakbrook Terrace. This is immediately across the street from Oakbrook Mall. It's on their municipal facility. And this is what the sign would look like. We took some pictures to show the 1,000-foot distance, just to show what the look of the sign would be from the residential area to the south. This is both a daytime shot above and a nighttime shot beneath. The next slide is the same from the other direction at the 1,000-foot distance. And as you can see, this is the rear side of the sign, the daytime shot and the nighttime shot. One of the issues that came up in the discussions that we had with the property owner was any light emission that would be emanating from the sign itself from the rear. This, the way the sign would be positioned would, you know, show pretty clearly that there is no light emission at the rear side of the sign. This is the sign close up, some ads that we're doing currently that advertise some iconic artwork with some interesting tagline that we've added. And just to finish, this is an interesting email that we had sent to us a couple of months ago, back in November. It's from someone who drives Route 83 and she just mentioned in the comments, which we thought was pretty funny, that she didn't have any interest in the business, just wanted to let us know how much that she enjoyed the existing signs and the advertising that's done on 83 and how entertaining she thought they were. So that's our brief proposal. It's a pretty simple one. It's a very minor modification of the ordinance and the objective here, of course, would be to build the sign to allow for some revenue to be generated to help the property, which is in serious need of help. So with that, any questions?
I guess I'll open just by saying, Mr. Mancino, who's here with Mr. Williams, isn't exactly here on a, on a state visit, but he does happen to be the village president of Hawthorne Woods. And so, we, we run in the same circles sometimes and so, they are, they are very aware of the recent business of the council concerning the proposed billboard down in Algonquin. And to be fair to the proposal that's here, one needn't have the same position on the two issues because there are differences between the two. One of the objections was it opens up a new district, the old one. This one does not, it expands an existing district. And the idea that the lighting not being right on top of anything residential and having this blank side that you saw, kind of, sort of, as we discuss things, that, that seems to change two variables that seemed important to some of the folks on the council. So, again, I think that's fair to point out as we ask for comments or questions because this is in the same spirit as our first item tonight. The feedback that's being looked for is a general willingness to, to get a ball rolling and, and see if something like this can be attained. And so, as we talked about in the second item, early signaling of anybody saying, "Look, I'm just not going to vote for this," is just as much appreciated as somebody who says, "I'm open to this," because I think as, as the last crack at the apple, or bite at the apple we had at this would show, signaling that early sometimes can save some headaches whichever direction you're moving. So, with that as what I believe is an objective introduction to a new subject that contains some elements as a previous one, are there comments or questions from the council? Mr. Pranav?
Being one of those folks that was against the previous one that came up, the only question, and maybe I missed it as I went through the, through the reading, is when you place this up, is there a area underneath it that's going to be fenced off or is it, is it just, how do you protect that area so that we don't have people hang around there? Best way I can put it?
Yeah, that's a good question, actually. The, the way that signs like this are done is that the access ladders that are put into the columns that allow for someone to access the signs above them. And in this particular case too, there's less of a need for that. And in this particular case, too, there's less of a need for that because it's a digital sign face. There won't be maintenance to the extent that, say, a static sign face would be required to be maintained, you know, vinyls being swapped and paint being applied and that kind of thing. The way that those are done typically is the ladders that are applied to the sides of the columns are kept 12 feet above grade. It's very difficult to access a ladder, to climb onto a sign structure at that height. There are some other devices that can be applied to. But generally, having people climb signs, that kind of thing, hasn't really been an issue for us or other sign companies, too.
I think my question is more the area underneath the sign. Do you have to fence off that areas to keep people away? Is it a green area? How does it work underneath the sign?
Yeah, it's a single-column billboard that are, they're installed on the basis of Kason-type foundations. So, it will just be the column that will extend above grade. Around that, we typically don't fence it. We can. It's not really a big issue for us. The electrical that is supplied to the sign is all locked down. There's really not a way to access that either. It's not been a discussion or a request of the property owner to do that either. But certainly, if there's been a security issue with signs in the past, I don't see any problem with fencing that off to secure it further.
I guess the final question, if there's a green area underneath it, who will take care of it? The lawn, whatever?
The property owner does currently, yeah.
Thank you. You answered all my questions.
Sure.
Mrs. Majekis?
Thank you, ma'am. I would just say that I'm in favor of this. I see it as a win-win and I think it's a great idea that it will help generate revenue for the owner of that property there to spruce it up a little bit because, as you stated, it's older buildings. There's been wear and tear in it and it does need it. So, I would be in support of this.
Mr. Judd?
Just two quick questions. So, it's $50,000 one-time payment?
Yeah, you have a ordinance that exists that allows for, I think license fee is the term, annual inspection fees perhaps. Those fees would continue to be paid, but the $50,000 is intended to be a one-time payment upfront.
One-time payment. And then, I'm not quite sure where I'm at on this, but I guess the question would be, is this would come, would this come forward in some, I mean, it's not going to be a PUD or anything like that, correct?
No, it would not.
What, is there a way to write it in that there would be some requirement that, you know, this additional money gets used? I mean, I don't want the guy just pocketing money like Alderman Majekis said. If they have, if we need to do, if the argument is, is this needs to be here so the guy has additional money to do upkeep on the property and make it nicer, okay, but what assurance is he going to, do we have that he's actually going to do that? Is there a way to write that in that, you know, I don't know. I mean, I'm just saying.
Right. In the code amendment that we're discussing, there's no way to write it in there. But there can be with the agreement of green signs, you know, side agreements that can get signed between the city and such. I see Mr. McCall sort of leaning forward here. Mr. McCall, am I correct, number one, that something like that really can't be written into the code amendment that's being requested, but can be negotiated if both parties agree to it, sort of on the side?
Excuse me. I don't know how you would, I don't know how you would draft such an agreement. I mean, basically, people live up to their agreements. Sometimes they don't. If they didn't, you would take the sign down? You know, I don't know. It'd be something we'd have to look at, I think, but certainly give it a shot.
Is that a sufficient answer at the moment, Mr. Judd?
Yeah, I mean, it'd just be something that I think would be prudent if possible. I mean, I guess, so just so I have an understanding, so green signs is actually going to own the sign, lease out the sign and then just pay some sort of fee to the owner of the apartment complex?
The office.
Arlington Office Park?
Yes, it's a percentage rental agreement. So, the revenue that that sign generates to a certain percentage is paid to the property owner for the right to exist on the property.
Okay.
It's a lease, long-term lease.
Okay. That answers really all the questions I have right now. I'm not real sure where I stand on it at this point, just to be honest.
Mr. Cannon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Jim, I was wondering, is it possible that we could ask them to put the money in an escrow account for maintenance only? For the owner of the property? Because I think where Mr. Judd's coming, I'm not speaking for him, but I'm thinking, you know, if he's having difficulties with the property right now, what would prevent him from just pocketing the money? Let the property get in further disarray and then sell it off? And someone's going to come back and ask and ask for a TIF to fix up the property and remodel it and all that?
Currently, absolutely nothing.
Okay.
Currently.
Okay, thank you. I guess the other question, from my perspective, what I would like to see you guys come back with is to give us a percentage of the sign every year as opposed to a big lump sum up in front? I'm not sure what that percentage would be, but something annually that has some kind of a small escalator on it.
We can certainly look at that. It might be part of discussion, broader agreement that might be done in regard to some involvement with the property owner. But, yeah, certainly, we're willing to discuss it.
That might be where you can write in some, put some teeth in with regards to maintenance on the property. If there's an arrangement, some kind of development agreement, might be able to put some teeth in there with regards to removal of the dead asteries that are there.
For those who can't hear the sounds outside the room, no, no, it's quite all right. I'll just summarize. Mr. Mancino, who's here with Mr. Williams, has stated that somewhere along the lines of a development agreement that could incorporate that suggestion could also incorporate some of Mr. Judd's concerns about maybe perhaps some limitations as long as the other side would agree to how the money can be spent and so forth and so on. That that's, it possibly could be worked into that document. Mr. Cannon, still yours?
The last question I have is really not directed to you, sir. It's directed to our staff, is I guess I'd like to hear something from our side as to how this would affect our city going forward if we expand this. Are we opening ourselves up to other situations that could be good or bad? I mean, we don't need to answer right now. I'm just asking you, as we go along, since we're just in discussion right now, I guess that would be a concern of mine because when we had the discussion about Algonquin, some of the discussions got stretched out pretty far physically. So, I guess I'd just like to hear an opinion from your guy's side as to what, a little bit of direction, I guess.
I can give you a broad brush answer. And that's one reason why it's here because staff didn't want to take it a little bit farther because we didn't want to spend more time on discussions, negotiations. And we wanted to hear back from the council because protecting the overlay on the other side and not having signs and other past discussions that the city council have had have been to the point where we wanted to hear from the council before we take it to that next point. But to your quick answer, the broad brush, once you have a text amendment, is someone else going to come? If someone sees another sign, is someone else going to come? It always opens up those next, but we will deal with each one as it comes.
And I believe to put a more specific point on that particular issue, limited logically to the idea that if you expand a current zone to include a property, anybody else who might ask to expand a zone to include them, I think would have a fair argument that you've done it for one, how about another? I'm not so sure somebody could extrapolate that to, "Hey, would you create another district for me?" Because the council has previously voted against creating another district. So, it's kind of a half-open door, depending on how you look at the specifics? Is that helpful?
If I may.
And Mr. Mancino, if you wouldn't mind, please just come to the microphone. Yes, sir?
I'd just make a comment on that as well. We don't have the exact figures here, but this lease was written seven, eight years ago. So, we've looked at it quite closely. To answer your question, if it was expanded to include this property and somebody else wanted to come in and logically expand it from the current borders of the overlay district, you run into other issues. And what I mean by that is if you go further south, you're too close to residential. Your code doesn't allow for signs there. If you go further north, you get into another issue with spacing from other signs. And you get into Arlington Heights as well. So, I'm 98% sure that if it was expanded, this is the only sign within that expansion of that district that can be done. In fact, I think we kind of planned it that way.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, if I could add to that, too. The way that the language was written, it allowed for 1,300-foot distance. The 1,300 feet takes it just immediately north. State law also provides for 500-foot spacing between signs on the same side of the right-of-way. If I'm not mistaken, I believe the current city code is a 700-foot spacing. So, there are limitations that are already built in that would, I don't believe that there would be an ability for, you know, another sign to appear even if there was a desire to do that.
Well, we've heard from the entire west side of the table before second bites at the apple from the west side. On the east side, Mr. Baner?
Thank you. I actually feel kind of awkward getting involved, almost using a third party as a proxy to talk to the property owner to make improvements. I think that's, I don't know if that's an appropriate role for city council. I mean, let the business that is done between the two business entities be whatever it is. So, I would feel kind of, I would feel it wouldn't be proper, I guess, for the city to get involved in, you know, some sort of pry bar to make the property owner improvers property. So, that's actually not a selling point for me. They didn't, for me personally, they didn't need to add any, you know, any list of potential improvements. This is quite a bit different than the last discussion we had on billboards when I saw the size of this one versus the size of the last one, the location in terms of where it was traffic-wise. You know, there were enough differences as I read through the list of just what the billboard's going to be that kind of tipped the scales in, speaking for myself, in favor of being in favor of this. So, again, I'm not going to be a fan of a layer of enforcement clauses. If it works between the two business entities, then it works. The terms, to me, look fair, one-time payout. Or if we want to get involved in some yearly income stream, I guess whichever one's more favorable for the city. But as of this point, looking at all of the pluses stacked up against the minuses, I'd be in favor of this. Thanks.
I can go back to the west side. All right, Mr. DeEstes?
I don't need your mic. To be very clear, I'm fine with the sign. I like Mr. Cannon's idea of possibly a continuous stream. And I personally think that government should keep their sticky hands out of my pockets and don't tell me what I can or shouldn't do with my own property. If I make this deal, it's my money and I'll spend it as I see fit. So, I will not vote for anything that says we're going to tell the property owner what he should do with the money he makes. So, I'm okay with what Mike says. I'm okay with the plan. And tell government to keep their sticky fingers out of my pockets.
Mr. Reenbass, if you wish, you'll round it out for us.
Why not? I'm fine with the sign. I read all the information. By the way, great presentation, too. And thanks for coming here. I would have liked to seen the owner of the property. That would have been nice at the same time. I would like to hear something about the $50,000. If that could be a little more solid and give some direction to staff on that and nicely move forward with it.
Mr. Pranay?
I asked you all those questions, but I forgot to end it with, "I'm great with this idea and I would support it." Thank you.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Further comments or questions from the council? I believe that some of the concerns that have been raised can be interpreted by staff as direction as we move forward and they can be the interpreters of the will of the council expressed here as further talks perhaps more directly involving the property owner. I do believe it's certainly a valid point to be raised. But I would also kind of remember back to the last slightly different association or proposal. The signed company was present at all those discussions, too. But we did hear more from the gentleman who were planning on buying the property kind of in the stead of a property owner. They were the ones who fronted the ball. But the signed company was certainly present at all those. We heard from them at most of those proposals. So, I do believe it's a point well-taken and it's not anything that precludes, you know, we're not saying, "Guys, don't come back, send the property owner instead." We're, I think some folks are just saying, "Let's be talking with all the parties." So, then with those as the ground rules, straw poll saying how many folks are interested in seeing this ball roll forward? Please raise your hand. All right? That's a majority of the council. So, I believe, staff, you can take this direction as you move forward in talks with the involved parties. Fair enough, Mr. Crumpstock?
Yes, thank you.
All right. Gentlemen, we thank you for taking the time to come out this evening.
Thank you.
And thank you for waiting around to be number three after a couple other proposals as well.
Thank you very much.
Now that we've gotten through those three, we can also soon release some other members of the audience by making number eight, number four. The usual pattern that we follow is the staff presentation that kind of opens the discussion. I believe Mr. Vogt will be starting with that. Or Mr. Crumpstock?
I just have one quick intro as he, as Mr. Vogt walks across the way over here. Obviously, this is just really quickly, to get some direction from the council in the February. This discussion regarding street programs, local funding and all that is coming back for the March discussion. So, there is more to come up. But again, tonight, we're just looking for the direction so we can keep the engineering going ahead. With that, Fred Vogt is up at the, we do not have a PowerPoint, sorry. But coming back for the fire station.
So, Mr. Vogt kind of as a part one of two discussions to take place over the next two months. The floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, mayor. And first off, thank you for, last fall, I went to do a multi-year program. It's been very beneficial to get as much information on the streets that we have previously identified. The field engineering and the pavement analysis is nearly complete. That's the good news. The bad news is that what we have found with a number of the street conditions is that they are in worse shape than what we had hoped, given their age, given the deterioration of the pavement surface as well as the pavement base in a number of locations. That's good to know going into this now. Our engineering staff is still looking at some alternatives, I'll call it, in terms of approaches to some of our streets that need partial or total reconstruction. But the costs, as they're coming in, cause us to want to have this discussion tonight to make you aware of it, number one, and to try to stay on schedule with regards to trying to get these projects out for competitive bids, to go through the IDOT process approvals that are necessary for the use of motor fuel tax funds and recognizing that other communities, as well as the state, the tollway in particular, are all out there looking for contracts, looking for construction. And the longer we wait, the more concerned we get about getting competitive bids as well as getting the work done in a timely manner later this spring and this summer. The numbers, as we currently have in terms of cost estimates, are within the packet. I won't go through those and belabor that at this point. But what we would be looking for, council, to give us their, I guess, straw poll, as it were, or some input and direction in terms of the streets planned for 2015. We have focused staff-wise on Newport Drive, given its condition. We have deferred that street for a number of years. It needs to be reconstructed. We knew that going into this endeavor late in 2014. The engineers are still putting the final touches on the approach for that in terms of traffic control as well as methods of removing existing pavement, existing base and rebuilding that. Benton Street also is something that we strongly recommend pursuing. We've deferred that for a number of years. That's, for those not familiar with that, over south of Kirshoff Road, part of that pavement has curbs, has sidewalks, has drainage structures. Parts of it don't. And what we are proposing to do is complete that street as a... Parts of it don't, and what we are proposing to do is complete that street as an urban street. This street also fits very well, the criteria that DCEO has given us for the last of the 2009 capital -- state capital bill grants that we received. So, and by the way, the cost estimates for that also are pretty spot-on in terms of using that grant money for curbs, sidewalks, drainage structures, regrading and landscaping of the areas that are in most need. DuPont Avenue is simply a one-block street between Brockway and Smith. We share that street responsibility-wise with Palatine. Our corporate boundary actually goes right down the middle of the street. Palatine was gracious enough to volunteer to take that on with their street program. Our estimate is that that cost could be as much as $50,000. It may be less than that, but just to be conservative, we're committing, recommending committing to having that amount of money available for our share of that's one-block street improvement. Those are the three that we're considering as part of our base for 2015, where the options come into play in terms of trying to fit into what our anticipated budget is, which what was approved back in December is $700,000 for construction. And all of the alternates that we've identified in this report to add any more streets to that, go over that $700,000 figure. However, there was discussion at the last budget presentation, last meeting, about potentially adding to that to get to roughly a, what I'll call a $900,000 figure in construction cost along with the $80,000 to $100,000 that'll be required not only for design engineering but for the field inspection or the million-dollar target that was identified within the report. So to be specific, we've looked at the three streets, Kevin, Jessica, Michael, that are all connected to each other off of Quentin Road. That is about $250,000. We've looked at Dove Street, a section of that, a section of Hawk Lane. We have found in doing our field analysis, more curb removal and replacement due to drainage problems there than we anticipated. The pavement base is not a problem or not a surprise anyway in terms of what we've seen there versus what we expected. And then we've got Auburn and Ashbury, the two streets that are in Fairfax Village at an estimated cost of $350,000. Those two streets were last resurfaced in 1997. They are in poor shape, and as we found in our research, they were built in the late '60s or early '70s with a pozolanic base material that we have discussed with city council over the years, for probably the last 10, 15 years. A number of streets in the city as well as throughout the suburbs that were built in the late '60s through the 1970s, early '80s are of a material that just didn't hold up very well. And in one way, we've been fortunate in that we've gotten 30-plus years out of the life of them. But for an example, what we did back in 2006, 2007 with a lot of these streets that are in the Kennedy area, east of Quentin Road, was to patch and resurface them, and we started seeing cracks reflect through within a matter of a couple of years. So we won't be getting our useful life out of those streets with those base conditions if we simply do the same approach with resurfacing. It may be something that we'll prepare more information for March committee of the whole or future dates, and with our engineers present to discuss different strategies. It may be something we need to look at, some of our accelerating some of our street resurfacing now to save some of the streets we've got before they deteriorate further, but more on that later. This is where we are right now, and welcome any questions or input as we hopefully can at least put a package together. We can certainly put some alternates together in the package and get prices on it, hopefully within the next 30 to 45 days in order to get our construction projects slated and scheduled so we can start working by mid-spring at the latest.
And since there are audience members who are here for this item this evening, we'll separate the questions from the input as we usually do. And before residents speak, there are only allowed clarification questions for anything that Mr. Vogt has presented either on paper or at the microphone. Are there clarification questions only for Mr. Vogt? Mr. Pranam.
You mentioned that we take 30 to 40, or you -- is it you want 30 to 45 days for this to be completed, or it would take 30 to 45 days? I'm not sure. In other words, I guess from what I'm hearing you say, how quickly could we expedite this?
We would hope that within the next few weeks, we can complete our package, complete our specifications, complete the plans, submit them to IDOT. That typically takes a couple of weeks for them to review it and make sure that everything is on the mark and for the requirements of the motor fuel tax procedures. The state actually will assign us a bid date that we mutually agree to. I would expect that probably the earliest that would happen would be late March or early April at this time.
So in our -- I guess what I'm looking for as I read through this and from what you're saying, what's the earliest that we could expect to start construction? Is there anything that the council can do, or is it basically out of our hands because of the procedures of what you have to follow through the state?
The next several weeks are out of staff and council's hand, other than to just get things in line for the proper plan and spec completion, get it to the state for their review, set a bidding date, allow roughly three weeks for contractors to inspect the plans, put their estimates together, and then award a contract, which, as I say, probably will be early April at the most optimistic to come back to council. And then construction, depending on the contractor's schedule, we would hope would start in at some point during the month of May.
Thank you, Brett.
Further clarification questions for Mr. Vogt? Mr. Veenbusch.
Yes, a couple of questions here. What I think I just heard is that we authorized you to spend some money to do some basically checks and core sampling of the streets, correct?
Correct, as well as checking drainage and the whole condition of the street.
Okay. And then after that step, now we're at the step of, okay, after having done our analysis, which was a good thing to do, we now have come up with some different estimates based on the information that you received.
Correct.
Right. And the information that you received is now telling us, for the most part, that our costs are going up for the work that we had planned on doing, correct?
Correct.
And just out of curiosity, did you, when you came up with the costs based on the street work that needs to be done, with the extra street work that needs to be done, were those cost estimates factored in with the lower price of asphalt, perhaps, because gas prices have gone down? Or how did you calculate that price, is my question, I guess?
It's very --
That estimate.
It's very difficult yet at this point in the upcoming construction season to see whether that's going to trend itself down or not. We're hopeful that it does. On the flip side, our concern is that the amount of work in this area, particularly the tollway, is going to have a residual effect then on state work and contracts, which then will have a residual effect on local work to where there may not be enough contractors or enough time for them to competitively or as competitively bid these projects as they did before because there's so much work out there. It's really too early to tell. The Village of Palatine just received or opened their bids last week, and certainly ourselves, our engineers, monitor that with other communities that they work for as well as communicate with other communities just to see the trending on the bids.
Can I just do one clarification? I think what your question is, the first numbers that we come up with, those are really estimates. So you look at the linear feet, you look at the square footage, you look at all the different pieces of the roads. Then when you come back with the core samples, that's when you actually know, okay, now you can't save the base, you have to change this. You're actually knowing what happens. So that first one is math-oriented, and with a look back, when you get that core, now you actually are going to have those better things because now you have the eyeball look. Again, it's a snapshot, but it's an eyeball look, how much actually needs to be done. And I will tell you that it's an eyeball because we've also started projects that it actually became out worse. And not to belabor the issue, when we were doing Barker, we did some core samples and we knew that there were issues. Once we stripped the actual road off and we started getting into it, we found that it was a dump, and that actually increased the pricing that we had at that point. So again, that's why you see the differentiation. That's actually why we came back and we want to do the two years of engineering so we have a better idea when we're actually projecting and actually budgeting. So I hope that clarifies one number to the second number a little bit easier.
I totally understand what you just said.
So.
I have a little experience with roads.
Other clarification questions for Mr. Vogt? Mr. Cannon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Fred, I was just looking at your first listing of roads here for the 2015-2016 street program, and you have a projected budget of $2.5 million. Without sounding obnoxious, is, did you guys have a discussion at all where you thought maybe we might even come close to getting that money over two years? Because that's a lot more, I mean, we're talking, that's three times the budget we're talking about for this year alone. I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but is there something that we don't know about that you might be able to come up with this money?
I think it goes back into the --
To be fair, if we're looking at the same chart, Mr. Cannon, help me if we are.
$2,499,000?
Correct. It does say 2015-2016 at the top.
I know. I understand, but that's three years' worth of budget, though, on today's terms.
Well...
We have budgeted $770,000 for this year, right?
Correct. With this item being in agreement that if we could, we would reach a million this year. So in other words...
Still two and a half, still.
Well...
Okay, I'm just asking. I'm not asking to --
All I'm saying is it sounded like the question was phrased, "Was it really practical to expect that money would come in one year?" And I believe the top of the chart suggests two.
Oh, no, no, I know the -- I asked a poor question. That's not what I meant.
Fair enough.
I meant, I wasn't trying to be obnoxious. I just --
Just looking for the clarification.
It's a big money, and I'm just asking if there's something that we're not aware of because we don't have anywhere near that much money. I'm not saying we don't need the work done.
Fair enough.
I'm just trying to figure out where we get the money to do this kind of work.
Mr. Vogt?
And I would caution in the answer that by, this is an estimate based on work that's been done today. We haven't gone to the step yet of where we would get the funds, whether these are solid numbers, certainly as the mayor said, over a two-year period, and it could be a three-year period getting into it. But the engineers are still, as I say, you know, working on different strategies, and if there are ways that we can find savings, you know, reworking some of the materials, keeping it on-site, mixing with cement, are just a couple of the things that they're still going to be looking at, and we're always going to be looking at these until we get to --
Okay, fair enough.
-- year we slot them. So it's a work in progress.
That's great. And a couple of other questions. Even though Benton's not in my ward, I'm very familiar with that street. I'm just curious, going forward, the reconstruction of Benton is going to include what? Is that going to have real curbs on it then? Or is it going to still be more like a rural street?
The plan moving forward and our recommendation is to finish the necessary storm sewers, to fill in the ditches, to install curbs so that it is completely an urban street as opposed to the piecemeal approach that kind of developed over the last couple of decades where as homes were built, the public improvements were installed. But in areas where the homes were already pre-existing, that's where we don't have curbs, don't have storm sewers. Some of the ditches are quite deep there.
Okay. Well, how wide will that street be when it's done? Because it seems like when you go down it right now, if someone comes at you from any other direction, it's awfully tight. And I was just wondering, is it going to be expanded even a little bit, even like a couple of feet?
At the north end, yes. The proposed pavement width, while I don't know the number off the top of my head, will match what is at the southern end near Fairfax where there are already curbs on both sides of the street.
Okay. I guess I would just ask, do we make it as wide as we can? And it kind of goes into my next one. You're going to redo DuPont in my ward, and the road, the part you're going to do, you said Palatine's going to run that.
Yes.
So is Palatine going to do that flat curb that they've been doing now throughout their suburb, their sub-tub divisions?
They will do the, what we call the curb ribbon or flat curb on the north side of the street, which is in Palatine. I've had discussions with their public works department. Originally, we asked to have a standard, what our standard is, a B612 barrier curb on the south side. For one, our engineers discouraged us from doing it because it can cause drainage problems to do it one way on one side, one way on the other side. But the real answer to me for just agreeing to do a curb ribbon is that there hasn't been any development on the south side or on the Rolling Meadow side. And I think that's something that, should there be future redevelopment on our side of the street, would be when we would look to get public improvements and address the drainage and address the curbs. But to try to keep the cost down now, we'll just build it consistent on both sides.
So what you're saying is there won't be a curb on our side of any kind?
No, there would be a curb ribbon to match the Palatine side.
Okay. So I guess the concern I have, I'm quite familiar with that road. That's also a very narrow road. So if we're going to put more permanent street in there, there's going to be a possibility of people parking on that street? And if someone did park even one car on one side, there is no way you're going to get traffic through there. So I was wondering, is it the intention of you guys in Palatine together to make that roadway wider since it's also a main access road to that whole subdivision back there?
No, that isn't part of the plan to widen it. It's pretty much in order to keep the cost down, to keep it at its current asphalt width that may, by a foot or two, become wider. I'd have to defer to the Palatine plans and get an answer as to what the footage is. I don't recall what it is, but certainly from a parking standpoint, we can evaluate that and consider prohibiting parking on one or both sides of the street there if we believe it's not safe.
Well, I guess the concern I have is if you -- You know, I hear what you're doing, and that's fine. But if you put those curbs on both sides, the way they construct that in a lot of the other parts of the town, when they build that curb, there's usually a pretty good falloff because there's usually a ditch there. And if you do that there and you don't make the street any wider, it just seems like you're creating a lot of issues. Obviously, the roadway will be improved, but I think there's also some safety considerations that aren't being thought about, these from a layman's standpoint anyhow. There's no sidewalks there.
No.
So if people are walking down that street and a car's coming, or if two cars are coming from each direction, do they dive into the ditch? You know, I mean, without, I'm sorry, I'm being facetious, but I just, it just seems like there's a lot of issues there. That's a well-traveled road. If anybody goes out there for traffic counts, there's a lot of people going down that road because all those condos and townhouses back there, many people come that way. If they're going north, that's the way they come out of that whole subdivision, all the way from Hartong to Plum Grove Road. They come all that way through there and up that road. So I would just ask you to really consider that. Unless you're going to be planning on putting in a sidewalk, you might be creating another whole issue in some ways. We also have development right down the street from it now. Those are all large homes with lots of kids in them, so there's going to be a lot more kid traffic back there than it was right on that street. So I guess I would just ask you to rethink that through before you come to the final plan. I'm not an engineer, but I just think there's a lot of issues back there.
Well, our efforts were primarily focused on the condition of the roadway itself at this point with the homes that were constructed there. We didn't really look at it in terms of redevelopment. Certainly, good points that you raise, and we can go back and look at it. I really think that the points that you raise are probably worthy of if and when there is development within that block, but certainly we want to make sure that we're aware of the safety issues, too, so we'll look at it.
Okay, thank you.
Further clarification questions on what Mr. Vogt presented either in writing or at the microphone? Mr. Crumstock?
Just one quick clarification, and maybe this goes back to your question, Alderman Cannon. Coming March, we will have more discussions on some of this, and it is, you know, obviously the ad hoc capital improvement committee has seen some of this last year limited, but again, each of those discussions that we have on funding is part of that March discussion.
Thank you.
And without further clarifications, this will be the portion where we open it up to people who have signed in on the sign-in sheet. So before we move to our second Mr. Williams of the night, moving from David Williams to Robert Williams, I would like to take the unusual step of providing an introduction for these two gentlemen, simply because I believe honor demands it. The group of people that they're representing this evening, back in 2012, submitted a petition with over 100 signatures from folks in the Fairfax area saying our streets, specifically Auburn and Ashbury, need to be redone, and we are requesting that our streets be done and put into the street program and so forth and so on. And that petition was forwarded over to the public works department and so forth and so on. In 2014, they again submitted a second petition with more signatures. In 2014, they again submitted a second petition with more signatures than the first time. And that led to some more discussions and so forth and so on. And then, you may recall, the group of people that we're talking about, because they completely filled the entire three back rows of the chairs at one of our meetings last year. And they came out sort of en masse to say, we want to be heard about the condition of our streets. And so, if you remember any of those things, you might ask yourself, how come there's only two gentlemen here this evening? The reason why there's two gentlemen here this evening is essentially because of me. As we have had discussions since they were out last time, and as I talked with them and as Mr. Veenbus talked with them as well, I told them, we will give you plenty of advance notice as to when this will come up. And back before Christmas, due to what was on the documents produced by the city, we told them very clearly, March, be ready to go in March. March is the meeting. And as you've heard Mr. Crumstock and Mr. Vogt both say, this is part one of something that will continue in March. But back on February 2nd, there was a conversation between Mr. Crumstock and Mr. Vogt and myself where I asked about what the phrase on the agenda, 2015 Street Program Recommendation to Proceed was going to entail. And I specifically said, we've told people to come in March. If they need to come in February, we need to tell them they need to come in February. And as we talked about what this would entail, my interpretation of what the answer was, was they can still come in March. But I believe inadvertently that what's sort of been set up here this evening, on like 96 hours' notice of telling this group of people, oh, guess what? The cost of your project has doubled. And we've told you since at least 2012, there's not enough money to do your project, and now it's doubled. And we only know about that as of 96 hours ago. We basically set up a battle royal to be the fourth set of streets. If you notice, the three different options that have been offered, Newport's in all three, and Benton's in all three, and DuPont's in all three. And so, even though, as we talked, meaning Mr. Crumstock, Mr. Vogt, and myself, that the discussion about whether the Fairfax streets could be included could still happen in March, even with the agenda item that was coming forward this evening, when the packet got produced, it seems like where the rubber meets the road, no pun intended, is what's going to be the other streets that get done. And I believe that if I were in the area where these gentlemen are, I certainly would have said, no, February is when I want to be there. And they did not have adequate notice, which I told them they would have. And therefore, it is my fault that these two gentlemen are here representing their organization this evening. There you go. So, Mr. Williams, you're the first one of the two. Mr. Lindquist, you'll be next, sir, so if you'd like to be at the ready, you certainly may. If you two wish to share the mic, you're also welcome to do that as well.
Mayor, if I could just point out with some of our estimates that we're presenting in this packet-
Certainly.
-we just received them February 12th.
Understood.
As I say, the engineering is still ongoing, just-
Correct.
-for clarification, we're still working on it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Williams?
Thank you very much. We are residents, we are not, we have no knowledge of how to build a road or how to maintain it or anything else. All we know is that the roads that we do have, because of a construction method that was used that did not work, putting down a tarmac under the asphalt caused the asphalt to fail more quickly. And then, of course, we're one of the ones, I believe, that are blessed with the poor foundation base that is because of, it was a method that was used and the materials deteriorated faster. So, first of all, we don't know anything about this, but we do know that we have, most of our residents are 50 years and older. We use our streets exclusively for walking, exercising, taking the dogs out, and all of the other things. There is only one way into the development and one way out, so there are no back streets that you can take to get into the area. We're talking about, I think, the, what was it, Bob? Almost a half mile of roads? Close to a half, close to a half mile of roads, the two loops that are in there. One of the, we've, of course, sent all of you mail and everything else, keeping you posted of our wishes. So, we're not qualified to say who should come first, who should come second, or what have you. But we do have real problems with the crumbling pavement for some extended period of time. And we would ask that we be given some pretty good consideration in this thing, simply because we don't use, the only other services we use are police and fire. We pay for the trash and that sort of thing. So, we take care of our own properties. We, all of the public property is taken care of by us. 20 ash trees had to come down, they're down and gone. And without, you know, we didn't ask you to chop them up or anything even. The damage that was done by a big storm earlier this year, we cleaned it all up ourselves. So, we really think that we have a legitimate complaint, since we started back in 2012. And we are very heavily reliant upon those streets, not only for egress and everything else, but because they are no sidewalks, and we do walk on them, and they are used a great deal.
Mr. Lindquist?
Yes. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'd like to just add a couple of things. A, when we had the list of streets, the priorities of streets, Mr. Williams and I took it upon ourselves to go out and drive around on all those streets. When I got this packet via the Internet this weekend, I went again and drove on all those streets. While I'm not, as Rob has stated, we're not qualified to say what street needs to be done first. I can say that as a driver of an automobile on a surface that is supposed to be smooth without potholes, without ripples and bumps, that our street is, along with the Benton Street, is worse. It's the worst, and we have no sidewalks. On top of that, our subdivision is one of three subdivisions in the city of Rolling Meadows that is similar, Fairfax Village, Winter Village, and Plum Grove Village. The difference is that in the other two, the streets are private, which leaves then to, when people come to our area to evaluate our property for resale value, for tax purposes, or for whatever other valuation you want to put on it, we get downgraded because they think they're going to face a private request to repair the streets. And they are not. That's a public street. But that's not highly known. So, it affects the value of our properties. And as Rob said, it's the only way in and out. We have no other choice. So, the other issue that I found, and when I looked at the, looked at the technical report, while the engineers divulged a lot of different information and came up with a lot of different estimates, I was really upset and concerned that they didn't express some kind of an opinion as to prioritization. It's not in the report that I can see. Dove Street is okay. Newport Drive, which eats up a vast, vast majority of the cost, has crumbles along the edge. But it doesn't have bumps and holes, which, incidentally, we do appreciate the city's street department coming over and put Band-Aid patches on, in the streets this last couple of months. Unfortunately, most of them have come out. So, that's about all I have to say.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Those two gentlemen are the only two on the sign-in sheet, so the council can proceed with its own discussion. I would like to start the discussion simply by saying, as you might be able to tell, in my opinion, I would like to see the choice being made to be the alternate at number three that is listed in the packet. And I believe that the operative point in my head is what Mr. Williams expressed as we use our streets exclusively. That's code for what Mr. Lindquist said, there are no sidewalks in this area. And so, while some folks might be tempted to say, we understand the streets are bad, everybody's streets are bad, and we all have to get in line, that's true for every street that we're talking about in the mix, except for Auburn and Asbury. That as we all drive down roads that aren't very well-maintained, we experience bumps and shakes in our butts and our steering wheels, through our cars, through the tires, through the shock absorbers. There are no sidewalks in this neighborhood, so people use the street as the sidewalk. That means the crumbling edges are not just uncomfortable to somebody sitting in a car. It means an elderly person and their ankles, it means a dog and their paws and all the rest who are out for a walk. These are streets and a pseudo-sidewalk. There is no other set in this mix. All the other places, Kevin, Jessica, Michael, Hawk and Dove, have sidewalks that people can walk down. And if the drive is uncomfortable for another year, nobody likes that, I don't wish that on them any more than any other. But there are sidewalks that people can walk down. On the list that we have before us, Auburn and Asbury are unique in that they are used by foot traffic as well as car traffic. And so, I believe a higher standard needs to be applied. And I'm not saying that squeaky wheels get grease. I'm not saying that the fact that a petition has been turned in twice should automatically make the council say, okay, then that's what we'll do. But I do believe it's another thing that needs to be considered, that if, you don't have anybody else in this list that has been as vocal about the need, and it's probably because they don't have to walk down their streets. I'm sorry that we can't do all the streets in one year, but this council, by what's presented here, is going to have to choose an alternate. I strongly suggest that it be alternate number three. Those are my comments. Are there further comments or questions from the council? Mr. Banjer?
Thank you. I was actually hoping this would be the last item because we've got some big-money topics we would have been talking about before this. I'm not saying that would have, would have changed what I'm thinking about this now, but it would help inform that. I think, I can't remember how it worked, we had a workshop the first year I was on council, and I think, Mayor Rooney, you had assigned us chapter one of The Price of Government, which, the subtitle, I think, was-
Suggested or assigned, perhaps?
Well, maybe it's the teacher side of you.
I guess.
And I'm thinking, it was an assignment, but if you remember, the subtitle of that book was How to Deal with Government in an Age of Perpetual Austerity.
Correct.
And this week, after I read this COW agenda, there were a lot of questions going through my mind, just because we're looking at a lot of big-ticket items. If we're looking at fire stations, if we're looking at, you know, we've been talking about old public works. Some of my questions to staff over the weekend were, gosh, do we need to spend money here? Do we need to spend money here? Do we, is this the min-max for Emerald Ash Bore removals, et cetera? And terrible answers. I mean, the honest answers that came from them just showed me that, boy, that's probably something that we've got to spend money on. And, you know, I just started thinking, with these options we have with our streets program, it's just killing me in terms of where we're going to get this money from if we, if we start jacking up what we're going to be spending on streets. Our Daily Herald article that was attached to this, this COW item was like apocalyptic in nature, because if you read it, you know, the nature of that material, as I guess we in the industry call it pause, it's millions upon millions of dollars to tear all these streets out and reconstruct. And so, that was just the icing on the cake for me in terms of what in the heck are we going to do? So, it almost tipped it in favor of, let's just be as aggressive as we can, because we are going to be spending, just based on that alone, we're going to be spending tons and tons and tons of money on our streets programs. And like you said, this is the first of probably a few conversations we're going to be having about this, and this is mostly just to kind of get our head wrapped around it. But I tend to agree with you. And, you know, option three, I'm not, by the time this is all said and done, looking back in a few years, we might even say, that's not aggressive, because we might, we might be finding out that, number one, with these costs, with these ever-increasing costs, number one, it's not looking good. And number two, just with, just with, and, you know, you see this everywhere throughout the country, in some places it's worse than others, but just this infrastructure that we have to, that we have to start being honest with ourselves. We've kind of let it slide, and we need to, we need to start now, or out 10, 15 years, it's going to be falling apart around our ears. So, I'm, I'm probably going to be, well, I tend to say option three as far as a streets program. And my assumption will be in the coming months and in the coming COW meetings, and as staff proceeds with this, we're going to be thinking long and hard about how we're going to pay for it. But it's something I believe needs to be done. If one of the more pleasant side benefits is we get these streets paved over at Fairfax Village, then so be it. I mean, that's, I guess that's win-win. So, if option three lets that happen, it lets it happen. Like you said, I really appreciate when residents come to meetings, number one, and reach out to their aldermen. Believe it or not, I love getting letters in my mailbox. My favorite ones are the ones that are actually signed by real people.
Send a few more, then.
And I've enjoyed hosting Fairfax Village folks at our Capital Improvements Committee meeting, and as well as here at council. So, it's great that they find the time to get out and get in front of us and express their, diplomatically, express their concerns. And so, kudos to them. It just so happens that I'm kind of in line with their way of thinking, but only because I think we need to be aggressive about taking care of our city streets. And I think that's about all I have to say. Thank you.
Further comments or questions from the council? Mr. Prayn?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have also had the opportunity to meet with some of the residents, because before Tim came on, Fairfax Street is in my ward, and some people thought that was part of Fairfax Village. So, I received letters for that. So, I did have the opportunity to talk, and I met some of you at some of the meetings. I have driven those roads, and I have, I have to agree that they are the most, most needed work out of all the roads as we prioritize them. So, I would be supporting number three. Plus, I've also had residents who are on Benton, and it's an area where you, you have like a modern street, and then you go into the country, and then you come back into a modern street, and it's all the space of one road. So, I would be supporting number three. Thank you.
Mr. Veenbus?
Yes, I have the distinct honor of representing Fairfax Village, and I've known them for 17 years. I have done business with them since I've been in Creekside. As the maintenance agent, we shared a common fence, and we worked with them on the replacement of that fence that actually, at one point in time, were hurting the values of Creekside just by how they didn't look properly on one side, and they looked better on the other side and all that stuff. So I've got to know them, and I know Mr. Seem Moore, who is your agent and does a great job. So as I was anointed in this role, I have met with you a number of times, and I have personally walked your streets, and I have personally watched your residents walking on your streets, and I realize you don't have sidewalks, and I know you use those streets for your exercise, what have you. As I recall, too, you had a injury of a couple of your residents on those streets that you didn't mention, but I thought I would just bring up two. So I recognize how streets fall apart, since I've done about 20 of them in Creekside myself, and I realize that the basis is vitally important to build any street. So from a safety standpoint alone, I would do these streets and put a priority on them, so I support number three, too. Thanks.
Mr. DeEstes.
I'll make this quick. It takes four.
Count me in. As a member of the Capital Improvements Committee who's sat there with Mr. Baner. Mr. Cannon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. While I appreciate all the comments I've made so far, a number of the streets to be pushed back another year are on my ward, and those people have been waiting in line like we've been telling them for a long time. And it sounds like four is going to be the way it goes, but I just would like to caution us. I know in the four short years I've been on this board, I've been disciplined a number of times because I've gone against what staff told us what was in line. And it just seems like, even though there's a need there, there's also a need in other areas also. I'm not in a position to say one's better than another, but the staff has led us to believe in another, in other reports that we've gotten, that other streets were worse than these. So I'm not in a position to judge those, but now, because we might jump these up, everybody else gets pushed down. So there are negative consequences to other parts of the town by doing this. And obviously, these people have come and done a good job of presenting their argument. I guess, yeah, I should have told people in my area that they probably should have gone down and protested also. But I just wanted to get my thoughts out. Everybody's not completely for three.
Which is certainly a legitimate point. I believe if arguments are going to be made, I would appreciate that they be made with intellectual legitimacy. And to say that somehow or another this discussion flies in the face of, I've been told in the past that we should talk about what staff says. Staff has presented three alternatives and has asked us, what do we wish? The recommendation for number one is not based on the quality of the roads, it's based on a math problem. And they have to ask us, because we are the only ones with the authority to change that math problem. So for somebody to take an argument that was made in one context and to apply it in another context in the spirit of throwing it in my face is not appreciated, because it is a misuse of what was said at the last committee of the whole meeting, and I don't appreciate it. Mr. Cannon, you're free to respond.
I don't think I threw anything in your face, Mr. Mayor, and I guess I resent that I'm not allowed to express an opinion. You might not like my opinion, but I thought part of our job was that we were allowed to express our opinion without getting disciplined.
And I believe if you would have expressed that opinion without taking shots at some of the rest of us, this discussion wouldn't have happened.
Who did I take a shot at?
I believe if you go back and read the transcript, when you make sarcastic reference to "I've been disciplined in the past," there's only one person, "And now I believe you've just made my point, sir." That's correct. And for you to try to say that this is now doing this...
Well, now you can say you've done it twice, Tom. So you can say you're a better man than I am, that I'm not allowed to express an opinion because you have a better opinion than mine.
I believe there is no further fruit to be had from this line of discussion. Mr. Judd.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I typically don't really have an axe to grind in most of these streets, because, you know, I hear a little bit here and there from residents, but nothing super significant except for Hawk Lane. And I've heard from a number of residents on Hawk Lane, and basically, I think it has more to do with the crowning of the street because of the way it was designed a number of years ago, that depending on where you sit on that street, you can't literally back out of your driveway straight without bottoming the car. Yeah, I guess we can say, okay, go out at an angle or go a different route or whatever, but, I mean, that's really kind of my only holdup. I'm not disagreeing with what's been said about, you know, the Fairfax Village. I guess the question I would almost bring up is, I'm not real familiar with Newport Drive, but the gentleman said that they drove on it, and it's in fairly decent shape. Again, I don't know anything, but I know that I've gotten a lot of calls on Hawk Lane. You know, I've gotten some other calls on varieties of other streets in my ward, but it's usually, you know, a one-off here or there, nothing significant. I don't know if there's any way we can maybe, you know, add Hawk Lane in somewhere along the line and maybe, you know, change the Newport thing. I don't know, but, you know, as Alderman DeEstes says, it takes four. So, you know, right now it sounds like alternate three is going to be the number, but I'd sure like to figure out how we can get Hawk Lane done. Like I say, just more so because, you're right, it has a sidewalk, but the road itself is crowned dramatically, and, you know, there are people that have damaged their cars. Again, I don't know how significantly or whatever, but, you know, they've told me that the cars have been damaged because of it. That would be my only real point I'd like to make, you know. I don't know what portion of Dove Street we're talking, I think part of it runs in my ward, part of it runs in Alderman Majakis' ward, but, you know. Hawk Lane's been something that's come up on my radar, I mentioned it the last time, so I'd like to figure out a way to get that in. I don't know if it's a matter of, I don't know if Newport could be removed and maybe Hawk and one of the others done or something, you know, to get, like you said, to the mathematical number. That would be my only request on that. I'm not really opposed to the Auburn, Ashbury thing, because I do understand that argument as well. But I'd like to get Hawk Lane involved. Thank you.
When it comes to Newport, I believe number one, Newport is in all three of the alternates. I don't believe Newport, Benton, or DuPont having their status in all three of the alternates are really up for serious discussion. And I do believe that in the case of Newport Drive, you just can't look at it the same way as you look at the other streets that you can go out and look at. The streets that we're seeing here don't regularly have 18-wheelers coming down them, which is what Newport has. It is business traffic, which is not the same as residential traffic. The corporate citizens that we have, I don't believe are any less citizens than residential citizens in terms of, okay, they don't get to vote for us, and okay, they don't live here, but they conduct their business at least eight hours a day within our corporate limits. And, boy, to hear people talk about how much property tax they pay, and they're correct, businesses pay significantly more. And so I think that, I think we all need to remember that Newport is in its own category as it is the only commercial street that's being considered here, and so you don't look at commercial streets the same way you look at residential streets. But I see Mr. Vogt has come back to the microphone. Mr. Vogt, do you have something to add based on Alderman Judd's comments?
As long as you give me the opportunity, I appreciate it. Newport has been on our list of pending streets the longest of any. We recommended it probably at least five years ago in terms of a partial reconstruct, and it's been deferred and deferred and deferred, and it's in the condition that it is now in part because of the fact that we've not been able to afford it. It's a big-ticket item. You're correct about in terms of what it serves. The other thing that we haven't pointed here, because it isn't a big ticket, but there is a possibility, and we're still working on some grant funding opportunities for industrial streets, and we may get $30,000 to $40,000 from the state because it is a truck route. We'll hopefully be able to confirm that within the next month or two for Newport Drive as we move forward with it, if it stays in the program. So we will be able to hopefully keep those costs down a little bit, and it may be just a one-time opportunity to do, but we want to pursue it whatever we can get for in terms of some assistance from the state. Thank you.
Mrs. Majakis.
I just thought I'd speak, since you haven't heard my voice. While I've been lucky in the fact that I haven't had tons of calls about the roads in my ward and stuff, that's not to say that they're perfect, because they're not. But I know they're much worse, and I know unfortunately that everybody can't be done at once. If it was a perfect world, we could do it all at once, but we can't. But I would be in support of alternate three. Part of my decision would be the fact, because as Mr. Lindquist referred, to the condition of the roads and the fact that, as everybody has said, there are no sidewalks there and they use it as their walking path and stuff, it does affect the value of those properties. And if someone goes to look over at Fairfax and compares it to Winthrop, or why is Winthrop a little bit more than Fairfax, and they see that condition, or maybe they'll go to Palatine instead, that affects the city. We don't want the property value to go down, and especially when we have an opportunity to do something to help them with their property value, and that helps the city. So I think being the unique situation, that, again, there are no sidewalks, it's a unique community in that aspect, I think this would be the best route to go. So that's just my opinion. Thank you.
Mr. Baner.
Thank you. Well, Fred's up there specifically in regards to Hawk Lane. Is that 83,000 grand for milling and simply replacing the pavement, or will we fix that high crown so that you can actually go down it? And actually, when you turn off of Meadow onto it, if you're going at a fair clip, same thing, you bottom out.
We are well aware of the issues that Alderman Judd brought up, because we've heard from residents two over the last several years about the crown of the road, the difficulty navigating some of the driveways in and out, and that will be addressed by the improvements that are proposed, whether it's 2015, 2016, to address that crown and to lower the crown.
Okay, and that's the cost?
That's $134,000.
Yes. It's not 83,000?
$134,000.
83 was, or 85 was the original...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Just to be clear.
Yes. Thank you.
So, Mr. Vogt, you have made mention a couple times of some things may come in cheaper than we hope. There are also a couple references, to be fair, that some things may be more expensive than we hope.
Correct.
So depending on where the dollars come out, that's what March is for. Perhaps we may be saying in March, with the alternative that we bid out, there may be another certain amount of money that we can do a particular area, but that's a maybe. The only things that are going to be for sure are the things that this council decides. March may add some things to the list, but I want to be clear that those are maybes, because there are some overruns that could happen as well.
Yes, and historically, we have typically bid at least one street section as an alternate to give us that flexibility if costs come in favorably and grand monies would come through as we hope that they are. But, yeah, the other side is also true. So we certainly could, because of how much work we've done engineering-wise, add a street such as Hawk as an alternate. But we do point out, and as you said earlier about the math, part of the issue is, how much money are we going to be able to put into the program once we do get the prices, which will be where the rubber hits the road in terms of how we proceed.
Further comments or questions from the council? Then as presented in the documents that we have, the question was, what is the council's direction on alternate one, alternate two, or alternate three? We'll stay in that order, to be fair. Alderman, in favor of alternate one, please raise your hand. That's one. Those in favor of alternate two, please raise your hand. That's one. Those in favor of alternate three, please raise your hand. That is a majority of the council. Again, this does not close the discussion on the road program. There will be more discussion in March, but this does set a baseline for what will be done this year, and perhaps some other things can be added if numbers shake in right and other things kind of fall to the way we want them to fall. Mr. Crumstock.
And just for clarification, obviously, thank you for the direction on what we're putting in with the engineers, but we always ask for alternates, and obviously...
Correct.
We will ask for Hawk to be one of those estimated alternates, but we will have alternates, so be aware of that.
And I believe it is, I believe, a perfectly legitimate expression of the will expressed by the vote, that before anything else is considered in the math problem, the three sections that are not part of the alternate that was chosen this evening should come first. So I know that different dollar amounts sometimes make us take different angles, but now it's become a question of what people have weighed in on for preferences. So as priorities go forward, I believe Kevin, Jessica, and Michael, Hawk Lane, and Dove Street should be considered the top of the alternate list without some compelling reason why they shouldn't be. I believe that's only fair as part of the way the discussion happens.
That would be our recommendation, yes.
All right. Mr. Vogt, do you need anything further on this item?
Not at this time, thank you, and we'll be back in March with some more discussion.
All right. Thank you very much, sir. All right, I have a rather interesting question for the council. I don't believe anybody expects that the next item will be done in 25 minutes, and 25 minutes would get us to the usual time where we take a break. One of the upsides of the new camera and microphone system that we have is that we no longer have to take a hard break around 10 o'clock to change a tape. We could now sit here until 3:00 in the morning, and they wouldn't have to do anything, but none of us want to do that. So my question is, do we take a recess before the fire department discussion, or do we take a recess immediately after the fire department discussion? I just don't think we'll be done with this by 10, so I think it's prudent to ask the question now.
Before.
All right, I see lots of hands or fingers pointing down. Without objection, we'll take a recess now. Let's try to keep to 10 minutes. All right, I just hit the button, let's see. I think they're on. Yeah, I'm sure that whatever introduction we have can kind of take care of, yes, there we go. So item number four, which has now become item number five, is a return as directed by the staff to the discussion of the fire station. So Chief, I believe we're going straight to you. The floor is yours, sir.
Yes, thank you. We have a very brief PowerPoint to continue our discussion regarding our fire stations where we left off last fall due to the fact that we had a vacant Ward Seven Alderman seat at that time. As we jump back into the discussion here, certainly won't rehash where we've been. We did give you the staff report just under two weeks ago to give you the opportunity to refresh where we've traveled down this path to get to where we are today. So we certainly won't go through the history. I would like to point out just a couple of things though before we start talking about the options where we left off in September. Number one, I just want to reiterate again what I've said before, that throughout this discussion, staff has consistently tried to do two things. Number one, we've really tried to utilize data as much as possible and evidence to steer our decisions and our recommendations, just because we realize that we need to try to be as objective as possible in making these decisions. And so we've done the risk analysis and we've looked at our service demand areas and response capabilities and shared all that, obviously, over the course of this journey that we've been on. And so I did want to reiterate that point. And the one other thing I wanted to say also is, staff has really tried throughout this process to use foresight and really try to look forward so that the people sitting in our positions 30, 40 years from now, and I may have said this before also, will look back and say that the decisions we made were really insightful and the best decisions for the future of the city. So we've tried to avoid looking at this from the perspective of what is the minimum amount we need to do to get through today. We've really tried to look at what is the best long-term investment for the community in terms of cost effectiveness as well as the ability to provide exceptional service over the next four to five decades. So throughout that journey then, obviously, and in this discussion and how we deploy our resources, when we talk about our deployment model, and again, when I say deployment model, what I'm going to refer to repeatedly tonight is the number of stations we have, where those stations are located, and how we deploy our troops through those stations. So when we do look at our deployment model as we are, it's important to just refresh our memory that this is a key component in our ability to make the most of our auto aid agreements and potentially enhance our auto aid agreements. And in addition, our deployment model, whatever it turns out to be, is a key component in obviously our ability as a city and as a fire department to meet the future service demand needs as well as the challenges and changes that we may encounter in the future to our community risk profile. So with that brief introduction, I really, again, as I said, won't rehash some of the data that we've looked at already. We did give the staff report to again bring us back up to speed on this discussion. I did want to briefly address the big question though before we start looking at the options, and that is specifically, why are we changing? And I've been asked this question repeatedly over the last few years by residents more than anyone else, who've just approached and said, we've had this deployment model, we've had our fire stations where they are for 30 years, it's worked fine, why are we changing? Why are we proposing to change what's worked well? And the key to answering that question is in this graph that I'm putting up here on the PowerPoint right now. And what that graph is, is a 30-year picture of the changes in our annual call volume. And so if you follow the lines, that bottom line is red, that is the annual fire response call volume from 1984 through last year, 2014. The blue line right above that tracks our annual EMS requests for service or responses. And then the yellow line is just the total of the blue and red. So if you look at that yellow line for a second and look at the extremes from 1984 to 2014, you'll see that in 1984, we were running with our two stations just under 2,500 calls per year. And then fast forward to the right side of that graph, and you see that consistently over the last few years, we've been hitting and going above 3,500 calls per year between our two stations. And that represents roughly a 30% increase in demand for our emergency services. And that increase in service demand isn't isolated to Roy Meadows. That's typical of what our neighbors have experienced also in the northwest suburbs as the northwest suburbs have grown. And so this is really the underlying force that has accentuated some of the disproportionate service impact that we've seen and specifically in the southern portions of our city. And again, we've talked about that several times, we don't need to rehash that. But it all really stems from this, the slow, steady increase in service demand for the Roy Meadows Fire Department. And again, just something to note is that during that time, from 1984 to 2014, our department has remained steady in terms of our staffing with 44 sworn members, and a sworn member being a fire officer and a firefighter. And so we've remained consistent over 30 years while that call volume has increased 30%. And again, just for some comparison, the Arlington Heights Fire Department during that timeframe has increased their sworn staff from 86 sworn members to 108 sworn members. The Palatine Fire Department has increased their staff from 64 sworn members to 91 sworn members. And the Palatine Rural Fire Protection District, other neighbor that we work closely with, didn't exist 25 years ago, and they now have 21 sworn members during the same time that again, Roy Meadows has remained the same with some little fluctuation, but we've remained the same with 44 sworn members as our staffing today and as it was 25 years ago. And so this is really the underlying force that brings us to this point where we are looking to change our deployment model. And again, don't need to dig deeper into the data because we have gone over that over the course of this journey together. So I will then jump into now where we left off in September, which is really talking about, and just to refresh our memory, some of those itemized options that we were looking at and some of the costs that we had tied to that. And if you look here, you'll see those costs range from a single apparatus bay, pre-engineered manufacturing building that we talked about with that price tag of $800,000 to approximately $1 million. Repairing Fire Station 15 has been on and off the table with a price tag of $550,000. But again, I do have to throw an asterisk up there, and I'm going to repeat this tonight as we move forward, because those numbers are based off that 2010 structure evaluation that was included in your packet last week. And so those numbers are already five years old, and so I think it's appropriate to throw an asterisk up there that those numbers are five years old. And then of course, building stations, whether it's replacing 15 or building traditional fire stations on property that we own or a new site, again, you're looking at a range of between $25 to $4 million that we've shared over our discussion. And that range is there to help you and to help us look at the different cost and options that we have and really to allow us to, at some point, enter the financing discussion that needs to take place. And as the city manager has mentioned to me frequently over the last few years, there is no financing plan in place at this time. And obviously, that needs to become at some point an integral part of this discussion. Specifically, I think the direction that we're going to be looking for, and I'll touch on this later on in the presentation here, is are we going to look at this as an itemized, step-by-step plan where we're going to take each single dimension, whether it's repairing or replacing 15, building some type of structure on the south side of the city, and use those as independent entities in terms of projects and financing? Or will we package the fire station direction that hopefully we reach here soon into an overall capital plan that would include some of our other infrastructure projects, such as the road projects that we talked about tonight and OPW and some of the other infrastructure issues that are still on the table at this point in time? So again, and I just bring that up because at some point, we will be looking for that financing discussion, and that does need to become part of this discussion. The other thing I did want to point out on this slide before I go back to the, before I go to the next slide and talk about the range of options, is when you're looking at this itemized list here, specifically regarding that top line of a single apparatus bay, a pre-engineered building that we had talked about, if we are to build a structure to house people and our crews and our equipment, staff needs to emphasize that that structure needs to be permanent, it needs to be ADA compliant, needs to be weather-resistant structure or resistant structure because it needs to provide adequate protection and space for our- provide adequate protection and space for our apparatus, our equipment, and our people. And so, you know, which means that in addition, you know, we need to have room to eat, we need to have room to sleep, to shower, to exercise, to communicate, to train, and to work. And we need, as I mentioned or touched on, you know, adequate storage, obviously, for our equipment and our gear. And so I say that to point out that, you know, if we're going to choose any of these options, we ask the council to evaluate those options on, from the perspective of whether or not this is a cost-effective investment over the long run and that being the next four or five decades. So staff, with that parameter, from that perspective, staff really considers a manufactured building to be a short-term solution to our response issue, which we could utilize, you know, to evaluate the effectiveness of a southern response area and to, you know, look at the three-station deployment model over a five- or six-year period with the understanding that, you know, at some point within those five or 10 years, a traditional building will need to be built and something that's a little more permanent. Because, you know, we just don't believe that a manufactured building will meet the long-term needs of the city. So again, moving now from the itemized list of really what the things that we've talked about and where we left off in September, going to really now the range of options, again, just to have a starting point for this discussion. And again, at the top, you're looking at, you know, a single apparatus, pre-engineered structure on Algonquin Road, combined with repairing Fire Station 15. And again, that asterisk meaning that those are based on the 2010 structural survey. And, you know, again, we would consider that from staff's standpoint, if we choose that route, to be a five-to-six-year short-term fix with the anticipation to really utilize that time to evaluate our three-station deployment model. And then at the end of that, you know, evaluation period, between five, six, and 10 years at the most, to really commit to either building two new structures on the Station 15 location and what would be that Station 17 location, or if we found some gaps or some issues that, you know, led us to go back to the two-station concept that we had talked about about a year ago, to utilize this time to make that commitment to go back to that two-station deployment model. And so one of the advantages of that first option then is it is, in some sense, a reversible decision if we're looking at putting a station on the south side of the city, repairing 15 so that we could evaluate some of, you know, the deployment challenges that we may not be aware of, you know? We can predict, and we're pretty confident in telling you that, you know, our response time numbers are going to look better utilizing our current crews and apparatus from three stations versus two. But, you know, until we do it, we really can't say with 100% certainty, there aren't going to be some gaps or some issues that we just didn't realize. And so this, you know, the advantage of taking that top option gives us that time to kind of utilize that deployment model and see if there are any unforeseen gaps or some of the other staffing challenges or concerns that have been brought up during this discussion. You know, this gives us an opportunity to evaluate that model. The disadvantage then, of course, of using that top option, which again is at the low end of the cost spectrum as well as the low end of the project scope spectrum compared to the bottom two, which I'll touch on in a minute. But, you know, if we do choose to put a temporary structure on Algonquin Road and determine, you know, down the road that that's not the route we want to go, you know, the difficulty will be removing that station once it's there. Because once that station is there and crews are responding from that location, the community comes to expect that. And, you know, as we've realized over the last couple of years, it's, community expectations are, you know, very important in that when they anticipate that their fire department's going to be there, they expect them to be there. So removing that station, once we put it there, is going to be a difficult proposition. And if you're considering that aspect of it, then, you know, you really have to ask ourselves, is this an unnecessary expense? In other words, are we just kicking the can down the road? And if we're going to build, you know, fire stations, should we just bite the bullet and go in that direction and be done with it? And the other, you know, disadvantage of that top option then too that could be significant is if we're going to use that as an evaluation period, it really requires a multi-generational commitment from the stakeholders in this room because, you know, five, six, 10 years from now, there may be different faces in any of our spots. So, you know, that all becomes part of the equation. Looking at the bottom two options then, which represent the higher end of the cost spectrum as well as the higher end of the scope of project spectrum, you may recall, those bottom two rows are really just slight variations of the same thing, which is rebuild Fire Station 15 where it is and put another station somewhere in the southern end of the city. So that middle row represents the option that we talked about in September of building two independent fire stations, independently designed, independently constructed fire stations on property the city currently owns, which is the property on Algonquin Road, as well as the location where Fire Station 15 stands today. And then that bottom option is the one that we talked about and brought to you in September also, which is the option of building two identical stations utilizing one design, one architect, one concept, but building a two-phase project that would, again, put a station on the site that we currently have, Fire Station 15, as well as a site on the southern end of the city that would require us to acquire property to put that site. Because again, you may recall, the property dimensions of Fire Station 15 and the property we own on Algonquin Road really don't allow the installation of two identical footprinted sites, just because the lot sizes are unique and different. So again, the advantages of those bottom two options, whether either one, is that, you know, we're looking at what you would consider a permanent fix. I mean, once that project is done, once those stations are built, you know, the city will have three fire stations that will serve us well for decades to come, you know, routine maintenance aside, obviously. The other advantages of those bottom two options are, you know, you're looking at a one-time project versus a multiple-phase project or multiple projects on one site, which will save us time and effort and some money. And then you're looking at a one-time expense, obviously, which multiple expenses. The downside to those bottom two, obviously, are, you know, to a large part, they're irreversible because once we put those brick-and-mortar buildings there, I think we need to expect that they're going to be there for a while. And the other big issue, obviously, with those bottom two is that there's a significant upfront cost, and there isn't financing identified at this time for that. So, you know, those are the downsides of those bottom two options. You know, but what we're looking for staff-wise tonight is, as far as a recommendation, you know, we're looking for some guidance from council to, and we really ask that you compare the five-to-10-year investment of, you know, $1.5 million with the asterisk for those numbers being from 2010 to the 50-year investment of, you know, a multimillion-dollar project. And then if we can come to a direction tonight, we would ask that you authorize, and that says the fire department, but really it's staff, I mean, Public Works Finance and the city manager are certainly going to be involved in the next steps as we move forward. But you authorize the fire department and the staff to, you know, put out an RFP and solicit the services of a construction consultant or some type of consultant to help us really develop a plan and start putting together some specific dimensions and obviously more definitive costs for this project. And then the last thing we ask is, I briefly touched on earlier, is, you know, to consider some guidance in terms of defining the parameters of the funding plan. You know, are we going to utilize an itemized cafeteria plan and move this project by project? Or do we want to somehow incorporate this into a, you know, more of a comprehensive capital infrastructure improvement plan of some sort? So with that introduction, Mayor Rooney, I'll throw the spotlight back to you and do my best to answer any questions.
I think I'll try to offer one thought to frame the discussion. Alderman Diastis made reference earlier to one of the standing jokes, you only have to count to four. We've counted to four twice now on this particular subject, and we're still talking about it. And so perhaps, Mr. Crumstock, if you might want to get out that Mano La Mancha CD and cue up the "Dream the Impossible" dream song. If we can get to something that could conceivably get five or more votes to it, it might be something that would be longer lasting than two previous votes that have hinged on a single vote. In this particular case, maybe counting to four ain't good enough. So with that thought to frame things out, Mr. Preina.
I say it with a smile as I come to the microphone. First off, I was going to bring a cupcake with a candle because as I went through the research here, it actually is a birthday. It has been 10 years since this project started in 2004. This is the third fire chief that I have known and dealt with. So dealing with this, it has gone up and down. I will, I want to compliment Scott, he did a great job. The information you provided us from last week. All I'm going to say is, Mayor, I agree with you, I've seen it go back and forth. And the reason I brought up the 10-year birthday is, maybe it was tongue-in-cheek, but we have kicked it down the road so long, so tonight, hopefully, we can come up with a solid plan.
Thank you. One of the options, and I'm not even going to ask Chief Franz-Groth to answer this because this has been a football going back and forth, but in terms of recommendations, I'm not seeing, we dispensed with the options. And the lingo we used two discussions ago was our range of options on the easels in front of us. Option eight, if I remember, was the ones, was the one at some point that the four on, at some point in time, agreed on, and that was relocating two stations. And that's not on here. The closest thing is build a traditional Fire Station 17 on new site and rebuild Station 15, I'm assuming, in place. The option eight was rebuild two stations within a span of however many years we dreamed up. So I guess my question, my initial question to make it a little more apparent to me is, is that off the table? Is that something? And again, this is why I'm not asking Chief Franz-Groth because he'll try not to roll his eyes. Can we bring that back?
It is certainly something that can be thrown into the mix. It is not the last vote that was taken by the council, which is why it's not reflected. The last vote that was taken by the council was to look at some kind of a third, and that's what these are here. Chief, can you help my memory? I believe where we left the moving bolt, the estimate at that time was $9 million. Is that correct?
Yes, I believe so.
I think that's where it was. So a little bit more than eight and a little bit more than eight and a half. There's no way to preclude that option from re-entering the discussion. It's just not what's here because the last vote that was taken by the council was to move away from that option.
I see, I see. I would be interested in reintroducing that. I don't know what sort of massaging or buy-in I would have to get, and I'm sure it would maybe circle back after we get some other comments, but I just wanted to throw that out there as my initial comment.
Mr. Diastis.
How can, and I'm just asking, how can we bring that up since the last vote was for this? So if memory serves me correctly, only a member of the winning vote can bring that other one up.
That is the answer to your question, correct. It would take somebody who did not vote that way the last time. As Mr. Banjer indicated, he's not one of those people. But it's certainly free to hint that somebody would like that to happen, and that would be their preference. But yes, you answered your own question, that is correct. It would take somebody changing their mind. That's what happened to the first two votes of four, so it would need to happen in this case as well.
Right, I just wanted to make sure. And I guess, since no one else wants to start this conversation, nor do I, but no more chocolate for me, I've had enough, that's why I'm starting this conversation. I do not believe that a pre-engineered building is to be considered, is a temporary structure. I think that's what was said at one point. I believe the Public Works building we have on Burdenix Street is a partial pre-engineered building, and it's not a temporary structure. So I'd like to take those comments and try to say, pre-engineered building or partial pre-engineered building doesn't necessarily equate to a temporary structure that will only last five or six years. Burdenix Street's already been lasted 15 years. That's all I have to say right now.
Further comments or questions, Mr. Judd.
Thank you, Mr. Preina. An interesting concept that, we just spoke about the vote and whatnot, but correct me if I'm right or wrong, if one of these options don't get four votes, then everything becomes on the table.
Well, that is also correct. That if nothing can achieve four, then there is no standing decision anymore. And so that could be another alternative. That's a good point.
The only thing, and I've harped on this for a long period of time, and the only thing I can say is it's all been validated by the report that the chief put in the packet last week when it comes to shift personnel. You know, one of the things I find interesting is they talk about the station on Plum Grove Road that was, at one point in time, a three-man jump station. Then it became a full-blown station. And to address the issue of being currently under manned and future needs, it's recommended to have 12 additional personnel come on. One of the things I've always kind of quoted is six. But if we end up with a third fire station that needs to be fully manned, that's 12 firefighters. You know, we can all agree or disagree on the value, the cost of those, but they're somewhere around 100 and 1/4, 150 grand all in. You're talking some significant reoccurring costs year in and year out. So that's really, I mean, it's in the document that was provided, so I just want to point that out to, you know, basically, whatever residents are paying attention, that, you know, I've always quoted six firefighters and, you know, the staff, and that's not even counting some additional non-sworn officers. Chief, if you could maybe help me, if we were to go with the scenario that you provide with the third station down there in whatever capacity, it's irrelevant for most practical purposes, if you split your staffing at 15, are you going to have supervisory issues? I mean, you're going to have two guys down there, I assume, and three or four guys up here. How would you supervise those two guys down there? Are you going to have to hire somebody at that point in time to supervise that personnel, those personnel down there? So I mean, are we looking at a cost of supervising the personnel down there?
I think we have some options that wouldn't involve hiring more people.
In the immediate future, but probably not for the long term.
Well, you know, and as I've said before, I know, you know, I can't give you that guarantee, you know, I've said that we can deploy our four crews among three stations, and our response numbers will look better.
Right. I'm just going to base it on the report that, you know, it was originally a three-man jump station that became a full-blown station. The odds are, it's going to start off as a two-man jump station, then we'll end up with a blowed station, that's all. So that's the only point I want to make, is that, you know, it's all in the documents just for residents to read and, you know, that kind of, people can understand where I've been coming from for the whole period of time. So, thank you.
Further comments or questions from the council? Mr. Cannon.
Thank you. I guess you're asking for our opinion, so my opinion is this, I am not for a third station, I never have been, I've expressed my opinion on a number of occasions, so I will not be supporting this. And I guess a question I would ask, because I don't understand this, is there's seven people sitting at the table that'll vote tonight, but only six of them have voted in the past. Does that change anything?
Well, I suppose that depends on that seventh person.
Well, no, I mean, I guess you are correct. But I mean, that was the one person that's never voted before, so.
That is correct. He can't change it. He can't change it.
Well. Well, he couldn't. I mean, I'm just saying, with the scenario you presented to us.
That is a fair point, correct. In other words, there's, there's a parliamentary oddity here in that one of the people who could change their vote to change the result is no longer on the council. That's correct. That's correct.
Okay. So. So I guess my opinion is that I want to have two stations, move 15, and keep 16 where it's at until we can afford to move it. That's my opinion. I'm against this scenario, in case you're shaking your head.
Oh, yeah, no, no, no.
Mr. DeJesus and Mr. Baner, or do you wish to defer?
Go ahead.
Okay.
Mr. DeJesus and Mr. Baner.
With respect to what you just said, I believe when the discussion of two stations, it wasn't move one now and move one when we can, it was move both now, or we don't move either.
Well, to be fair, it was, it was both. Meaning, of the folks who were on the side of moving the two stations, there were two camps on that side. One camp said precisely what Mr. Cannon said, which is a perfectly valid stance to have. The other side, which I happen to be a part of, said, then that would lose my support because my support is for if you're going to move them both, you have to move them both within a reasonable timeframe because then you don't get the coverage that you'd like. So Mr. Cannon's statement was not inaccurate, but you are correct. There was a difference of opinion among the folks on that side. There were two separate camps.
Okay, so I'm going to make another little statement here. It's kind of like playing poker. You're only turning one card over at a time. My biggest concern is that the city provide for the safety of the residents and businesses of the south side, which pretty much encompasses all of the six wards and all the major businesses in town. Retail businesses for that, for that. I'm open to listening to whatever.
Mr. Baner, you were next.
Thank you. All along in this conversation, I don't think I've laid out my, I guess, background with fire response. I grew up in a little 40-acre farm in rural Iowa, and we were serviced, I guess you could say, by volunteer firefighters. So Jethro and Billy Bob would show up with their pickups. And I kid you not, a lot of them were my classmates or their folks. And they would, you know, the tanker truck, which was a hand-me-down from several bigger cities that we'd, that we'd get a hold of, would show up, you know, a half hour, an hour into, I think our biggest incident was the fellow who was putting anhydrous on our crops threw a lit cigar out the window and everything caught on fire. So anyway, my background with response times is not measured in, in single-digit minutes. It's measured in, in hours. And if it was something awfully bad, well, by golly, lifelight would come down from Des Moines, and that'd be a, you know, a 20-minute flight there and a 20-minute flight back. So that's my background.
Twenty-minute flight and crop dusters.
Yeah, exactly. With a sling underneath it, whether that sling held the horse or the person, you know, was, was up in the air. But that's my background just growing up. So when I moved out here, and I, and, you know, and I've been popping in to see Chief Stewart first and now Chief Franz-Groth, just to kind of wrap my head around what, I guess, city folks' expectations are, it's, it's just amazing to me. And I'm, and I'm not here to, to, you know, have commentary on that. But one thing I have learned in just visiting both the stations and just conversations with Chief Franz-Groth and Chief Stewart before him is just the, the, I guess, just the top-notch service we do get from what we have. The reason I bring this up is, I am, as a resident, I am amazed at what sort of service we get. I'm perfectly happy with it. Whether my fire and EMT response is coming from, you know, the further station away or a mutual aid station is beside the point. It's just, it's crazy fast and much faster than what I'm, what I'm used to from a, you know, from a grown-up standpoint. And it's, and it's more than adequate for me as a resident. So that's my, that's my approach to what we currently have. I side with Mr. Judd in terms of slicing and dicing any sort of numbers approach for firefighters per capita, for fire stations per capita. I think it's adequate. So I would never support a, a third station. Now, in regards to what we put Chief Franz-Groth through in the past couple of years, just in terms of telegraphing intentions and retracting them and putting out a new set of options, it's been unfair, and he's been a great, he's adapted wonderfully and rolled with the punches, and always come back with what is just a great product of research and more information, because we always tell him, hey, come back with, with new stuff. And by the way, I had a question for him just this past week, and probably seven paragraphs worth of the most fleshed-out response I've ever gotten from anyone on staff, and it answered all my questions and then some. And I think he prefaced it with, I like, I always like to educate. So, so he's the guy to be in this position to tell us what we're going to be doing. This is long and rambling, I'm sorry. But we had tied his hands with our, with our requests for the several different scenarios. And, and he said that, you know, with scenario eight, he said, well, this is the best I can, I can give you based on the requirements you asked for. And so I was all for eight. And I guess in regards to Ward five, Ward six, that actually, that scenario actually brought a station much closer to our, to our wards. I don't think in those terms, just because this is a big city, and I don't want to be territorial when it comes to fire and police response. I liked the idea of this two-station move because it hit those main veins of traffic and got them where they needed to go in a much more efficient manner than we currently are set up. I still like that plan. Now, we have made decisions as a council over the past couple of years that have long-lasting effects and have actually, in my opinion, demonstrated the fact that we are thinking long-term, and we're thinking about what's in the best interest, sometimes disregarding, not in a bad way, but the price tag. For example, you guys want to do pensions out to 2043 or 2033? You know what? We're going to do it to 2033. We made that decision. It costs more money, but it's the right thing to do. You know what? We should top off our general, our general fund because it's, it's kind of weak right now. We've been weak in the past, bad economic times. Let's be aggressive and set a, you know, 25, 30% general fund account balance. Let's do this thing. And we made that decision, and I think that was a great decision. There are several other things. Alderman Judd pushing for the compensated absences, fundage, and let's, hey, let's build that up so we, we have something in store for the future. These are all things, in my opinion, that show that we have the long-term health of our city in mind. Sometimes they carry a bigger price tag. And I'm not going to say that's a bad thing. I know a lot of residents, you know, are going to be shocked when they hear, you know, for example, when I say, hey, that last one, you know, built two stations, biggest price tag, and if I had my way, it'd be scenario eight, which apparently adds another half mil, so hey, let's say nine million. I'm going, I'm going to go there because I think it's the best thing we could do for the residents. It displays willingness to think long-term, and in this case, chief plopped it on there. This is, this is going to be a 50-year investment. I like that idea. I've never liked the idea, and I've made this very clear, of plowing money into old decrepit buildings. I got called out by a resident last year about, about saying the Station 15's, you know, going to be crumbling down on their, the firefighters around their ears soon. Well, it's not either. Well, the longer we delay these decisions, the closer I'm going to be to being right. So one thing I'd like for us to do is just try to think about what's best for the residents. Try to not think long and hard because we've thought long enough. And then let's pull the trigger on this thing so we can get staff working on actual numbers. I've been asking for numbers, you know, what are, what are some bond numbers that we would see? Well, it's not worth their time to give those to me because we've gone around with different scenarios, and I agree with them. It's not worth their time because they'll give me, they'll spend time on something, give me numbers that are completely bogus because we've either changed our minds or we just haven't clarified where we're coming from. So in summary, I'm still sticking with, and I wish somebody who hasn't weighed in previously would bring this back up, scenario eight with, which chief has brought forward before, which is reorienting two stations. I agree with Mayor Rooney. If we're going to reorient, if we're going to make that decision, let's reorient them both, possibly within a period of five years. Tons of money is going to be involved in a relatively short span of time. We make the decision, staff will tell us what that means financially. But in my opinion, it's money well spent. We're, we're plopping down a brick-and-mortar structure that residents can look at, be proud of, and know that the people and the vehicles coming out of there are providing that top-notch service, and they're doing it based out of quarters that accommodate them comfortably in the summer, in the winter, house our vehicles and generators and all the equipment that they need to do their jobs adequately. And, and again, it's something we can be proud of and touch. I love those sorts of projects, which is why I'm behind the streets program where you can walk and drive on these things that we're having paved. So I think that's about all I'm going to say about this. I would look for somebody, not myself, obviously, to come forward and, and kind of resurrect that option eight. That will reorient and satisfy a lot of requirements that chief's been pushing for. And again, I wish people would think about this, not kind of within their own personal, oh, yeah, sorry, fiefdoms, but as the city as a whole. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Jethro. I don't know if it will help to offer two thoughts because my thoughts come with no votes attached. But perhaps it might help to throw out two things that I personally, from my chair, would support if, if they could gain any votes. To put it succinctly, number one, I would support the idea of a pre-engineered building in tandem with repairs on Station 15. And I would support that as an eye toward, this is what we're going to try, as the chief said, for maybe up to five years to see how it goes. And if that's the way we want to go, then we would put structures in both places, both places, that are better. And I do not agree that a pre-engineered building could be considered permanent unless it were some kind of pre-engineered plus, because the kind of thing that can come in for $800,000 is not what the Public Works Building is. That's, that's more added on, and we could couch more in. But my point is, if we're going to do it to test, then we should only do things that are temporary. And so I would be willing to support a pre-engineered building on 17 and repairs to 15, knowing that this is a test of, do we want to go to three? And again, I say this as somebody who makes no bones about the fact that I thought moving both stations was also a perfectly good option. The second one that I would support would be to make the investment in rebuilding Station 15, as well as if we're going to leave it there, that necessitates a third building, in my opinion. And I believe that if we build a third building that is physically limited to the point where you can't blow it up into full staffing, which I agree, if we build a traditional fire station down there, I agree that it invites having a whole third firehouse that's fully staffed down the road. But these cost estimates that say somewhere around 2.5 to 4 million, if it's physically limited to a single bay, I'm sure we can come in somewhere around the two and a half. You could even call it three. And both of those projects put together would be roughly 7 million bucks. People were blanching at not just moving the fire stations, but at the cost of moving. That's $2 million lower than those. So I would summarize mine as saying two temporary fixes or two permanent fixes if we're not going to move both stations. I would support either of those options under those conditions. Do I get any nibbles? Mrs. Majikis.
Can I ask a question first?
Certainly, of course.
When Stations, sorry, when Station 16 was built, how long ago was Station 16 built?
1980.
Really? Sorry, doesn't seem that long ago. With the thought that that would be a permanent station for a long time or no?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, okay. Just kind of curious. So no thought about ever?
Relocating.
Correct.
No.
Okay. That was my problem with when the vote came the other time, I don't know how many times ago now. When I, I thought the vote was going, or the straw poll was that, you know, move 15, rebuild 15 on another site and 16 stay where it is, and then it came out that no moving both. And I heard from residents saying also that, wait a minute, 16 was built to be there, and why did we build that? I thought it was supposed to stay there. Why all of a sudden are we moving it three, four blocks? So I have, I have a real problem with that. So I was curious about 16, and I'm surprised that.
Well, if I could offer, since we're talking about informational stuff, another point that that would leave out, though, is that there are still people around today who were involved in the placement of 16, who say that they argued against that placement, they didn't think that placement was good long-term placement, that politics got in the way, and that 16 shouldn't be there in the first place.
Okay.
So there is that point to be made as well.
And I understand, I understand. I said, I didn't live here in 1980. But anyway, so no, I can understand that, yeah. You mean, people have been discussing fire stations for that long?
Go figure, go figure.
Go figure that one, okay. So, and I've had a lot of residents say, don't change, don't take my fire station, don't move it, I want 15 where it's at. That's where it is. Now we've got the new townhouses coming in, although I have supported Alderman DeJesus on the fact that the south side does need the assistance and everything, and obviously the call time, it's important and stuff. So that being said, to keep it short, I would be in support of your, the second option you said, to rebuild 15 where it is, build a third billing, two permanent fixtures.
Fair enough. Further thoughts, ideas, comments, or questions from the council? Mr. Judd.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm sure this is probably not a shock, but I'm not in favor of either one of those, to be perfectly honest, especially the first one. You know, and nothing against what the chief said, but I think he's got a great point that once you put it there, it ain't ever leaving. And, and I think that, you know, what I'd hate to do is spend $1.8 million, what I'd hate to do more than anything, is spend $1.8 million and then turn around and decide five years from now, we're going to spend $10 million to build 17 and 15 to full-blown stations. So that, that first one, obviously, is probably one of my least accepted ones. And then the second one, obviously, I've been a proponent of two stations, and, you know, to me, it's not the stations themselves because those are fixed costs. Once, like the chief said, once you spend the $7 million, or eight, or 10, or whatever you want to call it, it's done. You're done for 30 or 40 years, or, well, hypothetically. It, it all comes down to manpower and staffing. That's, that's always been my main beef, and, you know, I maintain that, I mean, just even based, like I said, on the documents provided by the chief as to history and what's the pseudo-master plan is, or was. I, I want to stick with two stations just for a simple fact, is then I keep my staffing where it is, which keeps the residents' costs as contained as they possibly can versus exploding over, you know, I mean, what do firefighters make now? Imagine, you know, raises over the course of the next X amount of years, and, you know, the costs, you know, really explode. So that's it. Thanks.
Further thoughts around the table? Mr. Vienbys. Mr. Beenbys.
I figured I'd give it a shot, since I'm new here, and I've been called out at the very beginning. So, when I was appointed, anointed, I don't know, I say, but I've spent an incredible amount of time on this issue. I've talked to various Aldermen, I've talked to the Chief multiple times, I've physically gone through the Station 15, and come to some conclusions about what my thoughts are right now, to Alderman Judd's point. You know, along with the wonderful capital costs that are very, very high for no matter what option you choose, you've got to think about the overhead that's going to be involved with every station you put in. And I appreciate the graph you showed at the very beginning with the amount of calls that have gone up since, what, 1984?
Four.
Unfortunately, our revenues haven't gone up as high as the calls have, and I think that's one reason why we're in the position we are. But to that point, Station 15 needs a lot of help, I mean, a lot of help. Again, I can't speak for what's happened here for years and years and years, but that station is in dire need of some help, and that's why I voted a month or so ago about putting some money into that station, because no matter what, we've got to keep that thing alive, period, until we make a bigger decision of where we go from here, correct? So, on that note, I've had further conversations with our city manager about, for all these options, where are we going to get this money from? And so, as we're talking here, whether it's, you know, three stations, two stations, move to, move one, what have you, add a third, you know, I keep, what goes through my mind is, where is the money going to come from? Because that's probably the biggest issue we have, period. So, as we talk about, where is the money going to come from, whether it's three stations, or move them, or what have you, that's probably the biggest question that's going to come up when we leave this, no matter what the vote is, from my perspective, and how we're going to do that. You okay with that, Barry? Yes, the answer is yes. So, without, having read all the history, but without reading the history, and talking to some of the residents that I represent that were even here tonight, talking about this issue, because I bring it to their attention, and the people in my own area, they understand why the, and understand the population moved to the south of our city. They understand that clearly, and it's vital that we make sure that we help those residents and understand where the population is. And again, the Chief, great job on your charts, on where the calls are coming from, and all the dots that show that. So, from my perspective, although the dollar amount's pretty doggone high, my perspective is, we need two great stations. 15 doesn't get it done. We have to put a lot of money into 15 to get it right, and we'd be kind of talking about what the Gallagher people talked about here earlier, about taking an old building and trying to rebuild it into something new. We'd be better off ripping it down and starting a new station. Probably not going to do that, though. And why aren't we going to do that? Because we need that thing to be functioning while we have another station going up. So, you really can't do it that way. So, my thought is, and I'm probably going to foul up the whole system here, but my thought is, we need two good stations, put them in the right place, bite the bullet on the money, and see where that's going to come from. And as far as overhead goes, it kind of contains that, because we still have two stations from what we had before, although I know we'll probably have to add some people at some point in time with the call volume we are getting. And I will say, with my comments going with two stations and putting them in the right place, is that despite the fact that you don't have that now, and you're working with an old station, you don't have three, you're doing an incredible job. And that's all I've got to say.
So then, Mr. Beenbys, could I just ask for a quick set of clarification?
I would go for two stations, and put them in the correct place.
So, in other words, the double movement that was being discussed by the council earlier?
Correct.
That is the breaking open that some were hoping for, and some were hoping against. So, we now have more options on the table.
And the reason, again, for that is, you're still solving the issue of the South Side, which has got to happen, because we need to take care of people, where the population is. And we need to build two stations that we can be proud of. And I know about old buildings and temporary buildings, and I understand that clearly, clearly. And I want two stations, when I'm no longer living or in Rolling Meadows, that we can be proud of, that are built properly, and you bite the bullet, and you come up with
Further comments or questions from the council? Mr. Pranam.
You know, I've, like I said, I've gone through this for a long time, and I'm still in a quandary, because I have people that still want 15. And tonight, the Chief has shown us how the call volume has gone up, and what is coming into the mix since we've been starting this is a bill that was passed down in Springfield called Minimum Manning, which I don't know how that's going to affect.
The governor.
Is a resident going to? Agree with Brad. Okay. It's from your ward, Brad. I'm still, the mix is, I would like to keep, I want to keep Station 15 there, but we need to come with an option to take care of the South Side, so that's where I'm at at the moment.
Further comments or questions from the council? Mr. Diaz.
I have a question.
Certainly.
When, and when we were, we had discussed moving two stations, we also said that we heard enough residents saying that they want a referendum. If the council decided to go with two separate stations and get rid of 15, would we put a referendum out there for the people, or are we going to make them go sign petitions?
Well, I believe it would certainly be fair to say that the council itself should consider putting a referendum on the ballot. I believe that would be fair. That subject was broken open by people at the microphone, and I think legitimately speaking, that's not about the number of fire stations. That's about, if my memory and math are correct, that would be, if it were done through bonding, the biggest bond issue in the last 20 years. Am I, those who know about the bond issues, I'm seeing general agreement, we haven't had a bond issue that large. I believe that that's the proper subject that most people were talking about. And so, to get people's approval on the biggest bond issue we've had in at least two decades is something that I believe the council should at least consider passing. If it, if we go that route, and the council considers it, and the council decides not to, then the people do still have an option of collecting signatures. That would be correct. Does that answer the question you were asking?
Oh, yes, oh, yes. As I said earlier, we have all been shown that the businesses and residents in the South Side need protection. So, I'm one of the people who voted in favor of the third station. And so far, the only person who's said she's in favor of the third station is Laura. Lynn, I haven't heard if you're in favor of it or not. And if you're not, then I guess, I guess I would have to bring it back out for a vote. But I'd like to find out if Lynn wants to do it or not.
Further comments or questions around the table? Mr. Judd.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The only thing I would just throw out there is the fact that we're looking at 8 million, 8.5, and 9. So, while, yes, 9 is the biggest number, 8.5 is your only talking 500 grand. I mean, it's a lot of money, but over the course of a 20-year bond, it's not a lot of money. So, I mean, that's the only thing, you know, I would hope that, and I don't know how we would quantify it or whatever, but if we get to a point where we say, okay, we're going to have a referendum, and it's, and I don't want to put words in your mouth, because you didn't say this, but it's only about the $9 million, because that's not what you said. But, you know, the other option is, is we spend 8.5.
Well, or another option is, we spend 1.5, and that's nowhere near 9.
Correct. But I'm just, you know what I'm saying? So, I mean, it's, I mean, we could also just say, we're just going to rebuild 15 where it is for 500K and call the whole thing good. That's not something I would support, but, I mean, my point is, is if the referendum, I don't think it's just about $9 million, in my opinion, you know? And I would hope residents wouldn't think that. I hope they would look at the whole entire picture as to, how do we cure what the Chief, and what, you know, Chief performed, showed us is, you know, I wouldn't say substandard service, but not as nice a service as we'd like to provide the South Side, and this is the way that we can do it with, per se, a cap on the costs moving forward versus a potential uncapped cost moving forward. So, that's kind of, I mean, that's kind of been my mantra the whole time, is it's not so much the, you know, whether you spend 8.5, 8, or 9, you're going to bond it out. We already know that. That's kind of how you have to go with it, when you don't have $9 million laying around.
Certainly.
So, it's not those costs, those have never been those costs, because, in my opinion, because that's completely sunk. It's the costs you have that are associated without it. You know, you start talking about another vehicle, and another set of apparatus and stuff, and yes, that's not in the plan now, but the master plan provided by the 2004 committee suggested 12 more firefighters and more apparatus, so on. That's when I, that's when I look at it, I mean, I don't know how you phrase that in a referendum question. Do you want to spend $9 million, or do you want to spend 8, 8.5, 1.8, whatever the case might be, with the potential of hiring 12 more firefighters, and having ongoing costs? You can't do that, so I mean, it's.
Correct, that's exactly the point.
Right, so it's, that's what I'm saying, is.
To the point that you're making, I don't disagree a single bit that 8 million or 8.5 would be close enough to hit a threshold either. I just haven't heard a single person at this table yet express opinion that either the 8 million or the 8.5 million is where they want to go. So, I don't consider those in play. That's all. If somebody put them in play, I would make the same argument, I just don't see that as being in play right now. Mr. Pranam.
Yeah, I don't want to spend that 8.5 million or that 9 million, and in answer to your question, I want to keep Station 15, and I'd be willing to support a test on Station 17. I don't want the full-blown station, but I'd be willing to look at a test.
Okay, so then.
Clarify that for me, because you said it's a test on both, or it's a fix on both. And I thought that's, I thought that's what you had said.
A temporary both.
Right.
Is a test of 17.
And the same thing on 15.
There's nothing to test on 15.
Well, I know. You said two temporary fixes.
Yes.
Or two permanent fixes.
Correct. And where I'm ballparking those is.
1.5.
1.5 for the one, and 6.5 for the other. Yes. No, I'm saying six, making numbers from the, you would have to have something that is above a basic pre-engineered structure, and a full rebuild of 15. So, a full rebuild of 15 is around four.
Okay.
And you'd have to figure something like two.
Okay.
For the pre-engineered plus. It could be the low side.
The temporary fix is just.
1.5.
Is just fixing 15 and.
And putting up a structure.
A structure.
On the South Side, that I believe should be assumed to be a five, six-year, is this what we really want, like the Chief said?
Okay.
Yes.
I just want to make sure I understand what you're saying, and that's what you're saying?
Rebuild 15 and a temporary on.
But that's not, that's not.
Well, rebuilding 15 is 2.5 to 4. So, that's another number that hasn't been broken out yet. That would be, by this estimation, 3.5 to 5 million, adding a million on to the rebuilding of Station 15. So, that's a third-dollar figure that's not up on the charts. Something that might, I hate to even throw it out there, but something that would not give the Chief a single bit of work. I don't think there's a reasonable expectation of achieving a consensus tonight. I think the council might do well to say, no, the Chief has done enough work, we're not going to ask him to do any more research, but people need time to process options that haven't been even put in these packets. Maybe we come back at this again in one month, without saying staff prepare anything for us. They've prepared more than any reasonable people should be asked to do, and we go, you know what, the ball is firmly in our court now. And so, people get 30 days to talk to their residents, and whatever. It's a thought, unless you want to be here until 2:00 in the morning. If that's what you want to do, then you're free to scoff at my idea. No. Mr. Diaz.
Mr. Ray, can we, I can stop this tonight. I can call for, I can change my mind, call for a vote, move the two stations, because I'm not hearing anything, and then call for a referendum and let the people decide. Because we know, once we get to a referendum, they're all going to vote no, and after the, pardon me, and we're going to be back with the same vote, saying, now we know there's not two stations, now it's just a matter of, do we want, now there's not two stations, now it's just two permanent fixes.
The only thing I would caution is that the one fly in that ointment is, both things take four votes.
There'll be four. Well, there'll be four votes if I change and vote, because there's already three to move.
Understood, but a referendum does as well. And if at least three members of the council don't follow you on the referendum vote, you, we have to count to four for every vote.
Or else the people, or else.
Have to go get petitions.
Those people who don't want to give the people, who don't want to make it easy for the residents, are going to vote no, let them go sign a petition.
Well, that's correct. I'm just saying that that's the potential, nobody can just say, I'll do this, and then I'll call for a referendum, because nobody gets to call one, only the whole council does.
Correct. And then what does it take for us to call for a referendum?
It takes four.
And when does that get done?
Well, the next possibility.
Rather than when, what's, what would, if I said I wanted to call for a referendum?
We bring a resolution to the council, as we have in the past.
Okay. And that could be at the next council meeting?
It could, I mean.
Or it could be at the next one.
Next one is a little short, first in March is probably better.
And the next election that it's possible to get on is going to be?
Well, there's a primary in 16, could it be done then? So, the February, March of 2016.
So, the council will then be frozen for another year?
If it passes the council, that's correct.
Oh, I don't see why it wouldn't pass the council.
There have been times where it hasn't.
I understand.
I'm just saying, everybody needs to consider all the possibilities.
So, then I would just ask, do we want to move ahead with this, or do we, or do we want to, how many of the people here sit around the table want to let the people make, decide on a referendum? I would. Anybody else?
Isn't this your job?
Well, I'm not sure what you mean.
Yelling out questions?
I'm just asking a question.
You're asking for an informal poll.
Well, okay, but I believe it's being asked rhetorically. I don't, I don't believe it's a serious request, that's all. If you'd like, I will be happy to step in and say, okay, the point has been made, so fair enough. Mrs. Majikis.
I don't have a problem with the referendum. My problem is 15 gets worse and worse and worse. It's been 11 years. So, that's, sorry, sorry. worse. It's been 11 years. So, that's, sorry, sorry. That's my problem.
Correct.
Putting up, because like you said, referendum's going to be November. So, we're always sitting-
March, 2016.
March, 2016.
Yes. About a year away.
A year away.
Correct.
So, that's what I'm saying. So, now 15's a whole nother year away. Then the referendum comes, then the decision's made, then we start talking again, whoever's at this table, which I think we'll all be here. Um, so that, that's my-
Correct.
I'm just saying. That's my concern.
So, in other words, in some level, there's a, there's an element of cutting off one's nose to spite one's face? Mrs. Majikis?
Okay, sorry. Um, I'm okay with saying, all right, that's it, guys. March. Meeting. Make a decision, be done. If anybody wants to reread their notes, rethink their thoughts, redo their numbers, whatever, I am okay with that and saying March is it. Let's do it. Let's get off the pot. I'm just putting it out there. Thank you.
Mr. Cannon?
Mr. Mayor, could you or Mr. McCall clarify something for me, just from my own knowledge? If we went to a referendum, I believe in the past, I was told it has to be a yes or no question?
That is correct.
Okay. So, I'll ask the rhetorical question. We've been working on this for however years you want to throw out. If we can't come to a decision, how are we going to ask one question that's going to solve this problem?
Well, I believe the way that would be done is the scenario that Mr. Diastis is talking about is four or more votes go back to the proposal to move both fire stations at an estimated cost of $9 million. And the referendum question is, do the people approve that plan or not? Mr. McCall, is that correct? So, that's the yes or no question that would be voted up or down?
Okay. And I appreciate that explanation, but I guess the question I would ask then, where do we go from there? I mean, what, you know, there might be no answer that's acceptable.
Well, there would either be yes or no.
They would say yes or no, but then where do we go from there? That doesn't, that doesn't anything, that doesn't ever address the third station.
Again, that, that is correct, that these things are always taken under advisement by the council. And so, therefore, the council would know what the will of the people is. And I believe this council has shown in the past that they are at least honor-bound to respect the way the referendum turns out. So, if the referendum were to pass, then that plan would be implemented by the council in theory. And if that plan were not to pass, then the council would go back to this whole drawing board all over again and say, two stations is off the table, so what do we do if two stations is off the table? And that would either way drive the discussion from that point, I believe. Is that an answer to your question?
It is, and I appreciate that. And I guess I would just remind everybody that throughout all this discussion, it started in my tenure three years ago, when I brought up getting fixed, 15 fixed, is that each chief has said the same thing time after time. When we proposed to move 15, the only reason we proposed that was to better serve the South Side. I don't think, there's a person at this table now or before that ever questioned that the South Side needed better service. That was never part of the equation, even though, well, anyhow. So, I just want to make sure that that's out there because everybody wants better response time there, and that was the whole impetus of us moving 15 ever. So, I just want to make sure that's out there again, so it doesn't get lost in the shuffle.
Fair enough.
Thank you.
Mr. Banier?
Well, and Alderman Diastis characterizes this as us choosing to throw it to a referendum, uh, and if not, have the people rise up with petitions. And I think that's very unfairly characterizing some of us who listen to residents, let's say at baseball games and, and out and about, and who say, why, why would you guys even consider putting something to referendum? Can't you make decisions on your own? Can't, we elected you to make a decision on your own. So, I think, I, I don't think that's good characterization of, if we don't put this to referendum, then the people are going to rise up and, and put it to a petition. I think there's a lot of people out there watching tonight who are saying, just do something already. And, and they either trust us to, to do due diligence, which is why I don't want to delay this vote for another month, uh, or, or they, or they just laugh because we can't. Uh, so, I'd like to solve this question tonight. I think maybe some people are scared because it looks like there's four people who might have a consensus on something and move this forward from where it was moving before. And, and so, my, my recommendation is, I, well, my preference is, I don't want to delay this any further. I'd like to take a straw poll tonight and say, here are some choices. A new one has been placed on the table, and offer us a chance to make decisions.
Fair enough. And what's good for the goose is what's good for the gander. If, if somebody wants to say other people are characterizing positions unfairly, one should not then characterize the other position unfairly as saying people are scared and so forth and so on. We can, we can step back from that edge of perhaps a bit exaggeration of the unfair characterizations. I think, uh, we're, we're all here at the table with good intentions. We're all here at the table with good intentions. That's supposed to be the thought. So, Mr. Prina?
And help me follow this, Mayor, because, okay, it seems the consensus here is, are not the consensus. We have two camps, either moving two stations or rebuilding 15 and trying a test of 70. That's what I have said. I believe that's what Alderman-
Mm-mm.
Was that what you said?
No, I, I, I think, I think there's two camps on the three side. Yes, I do.
Okay. Well, that's where I'm at, and if you want to call a vote with that, that's great tonight. I mean, I'm, if you want to go forward tonight, I'm just saying, I'm,
Mr. Diastis?
Mr. Prina, I, I sincerely appreciate your position, but you can't rebuild 15 and say seven, and, and do a test on 17, because then the third station, if it fails, you're going to tear it down and say, we're back to where we were. So, it's either a, it's either temporary on 15 and 17, or it's permanent on both of those. If you want to do permanent and a test, then I'm going to change my vote and go with the camp that says, let's just change two stations and call for a referendum and see what happens. And we're stuck then till the referendum. Because there was enough people who said they wanted a referendum, not that we couldn't make a decision, but that we're going to be spending $9 million or $8.5 million in bond money. And the people should have a vote on whether or not we should spend that kind of money. It's not a matter of two stations to me. Two stations gives me all the protections I need on the South Side, and a permanent fix of 15 and a permanent 17 does the same for me. And if the permanent fix on 17 is a limited station with limited capabilities, then that defer, that, that takes your, your thought process out of the question because we can't expand it because there's no room to expand it. And if we're going to build a new 15, and you build that to the same degree that it can't be expanded, so we can't expand staffing. I understand exactly what you're saying. I don't disagree with you. But if we're going to build two new stations permanently, you build them so we can expand, and so it won't happen in the future. I don't disagree. But you can't have a permanent 15 and a temporary 17. That's, that's really not on the table because that's not a solution. And if that's how you feel, then I need to change my vote and go with two stations and, and call for the referendum. Because then we're going to be spending $9 million, and the people should have the right to decide whether we spend $9 million. They've got, we can give them all the facts. We can educate them. We can tell them, this is what is needed for a 50-year fix. Or we can fix 15 and 17 and do the same thing and say, this is what it takes for a 50-year fix.
Further comments or questions from the council? Then if we run out of comments and questions, it would be time for the straw poll. All right, straw poll it is. I believe a fair way to start by phrasing the question, and notice I use the word "start," is to start with two options. One option being return to the old plan of moving both fire stations, and the other option being a third structure down in Algonquin. I believe returning to that phrase that we used before, it allows the two camps on that side to at least come together for that vote. If that vote were to win, then we could sort out the camps from there. So, is everybody all right with those two options being asked first to see if something can get to four, dream the impossible dream of five or more? Um, is everybody okay with those two choices being the starting point?
Say again, what's, what's the two options?
The two choices are go back to the old plan to move both, or a third structure on Algonquin.
So, move two or build a third?
Yes. That's correct. Is everybody okay with those two choices? Then if everybody's okay with those two choices, let's ask them in that order. How many folks are in favor of going back to the old plan of moving both fire stations? That is a fifth hand. Five. How many folks are saying, I'd like to see a third structure on Algonquin, build a third building? There are two. That is a five to two vote. Chief, the direction that you had asked for is to go back to the idea of moving both 15 and 16 that was discussed earlier. If somebody would like to ask to have a referendum resolution prepared for the first meeting in March, they would be welcome to as part of the direction from this item.
I would like to ask that.
I kind of thought you might. Therefore, that's also staff direction to prepare an ordinance that would call for- I think it was a resolution last time around? Okay. It's possible that it could be an ordinance, I suppose, but I only recall one reading. I don't recall two. But if I'm mistaken, at least we would say a resolution or first reading of an ordinance at the first meeting in March. All right. Well, then, there's some homework to be done from there. Well, Chief, we've gone from a vote of four to a vote of four and now to another vote of four. There you have it.
Oh, five.
Oh, I, yeah, say, okay, correct. Technically, this time it was five at the last second. Yes. All right. So, um, then will that do for the item on the fire station? All right. With that doing for the item on the fire station, that brings us to the next item, which I've completely forgotten, whatever the heck it is. Oh, the budget parameters. Yes. Okay.
EDC we're going on.
Say again?
Just so people at home-
Oh, I missed it. The, yes, I'm sorry. The, the economic development recap. Uh, Mr. Crumstock and I spoke during the break, and considering that it's already almost 11:15, we thought that the document is there, everybody can read it. We would consider that sufficient if there's no objection from the council. Is there any objection to the posting of this document serving as the item? Fair enough. Then, we get to the budget parameters. So, I know, Mr. Crumstock will kick this off. I see Ms. Gallagher coming to the podium. So, Mr. Crumstock, the floor is yours.
Obviously, for the last few years, we've been, uh, doing budget parameters because obviously staff starts on the budget, and we've already started on the 2016 budget, as we mentioned in our Friday letters. But part of the parameters also gives us some of those options to have some of those discussions with everybody. Um, and the starting points that we talk about, and again, my comments are very brief, and, um, you know, the same thing that we've been saying for years is that we do look at natural growth. We look at conservative, um, ideas and everything else. However, this year, um, obviously Springfield is potentially looking at new ideas. Okay, maybe they're old and they just come back again. But PPRT is going to be discussed, and that's about $170,000 to the city. Our red lights all of a sudden have been starting to be discussed down in Springfield. That's about a half a million dollars. Income taxes, we all know, had a little bit of a different change, and that's about $2.2 million into some of the items. Obviously, when we talked about property tax in the years past, we've tried keeping them, um, the best that we could, except for pensions, and that's the 2033 number that we actually typically look at. And at this point in time, obviously, the actuarials are working on some of their new numbers, but the actuarial we won't have at this point in time. Typically, when they're looking at their numbers, it's about a 7% return. Um, none of our pensions were actually at 7%. They're actually under that. So, we do know that number actually will go down. In some of the parameters that we talk about, it's some of the traditional ones that we talk about. So, sewer rate about a 5%, stormwater at 5%, water rate, the city portion of operations to cover capital expenses at 5%, but then we also have the Jawa increase from the city of Chicago. The other mark that I always reiterate to people is that we still are working on our, um, chargebacks. They're not at 100%. You hear me? Always, um, harp on that. Um, and again, the 911 is going to need an influx in some of that numbers. Before, um, Ms. Gallagher starts over, the last two pages I just want to bring your attention to is what we typically do when we're talking about the budget is property tax levy. And what we've done on this second to last page is show you that the two bonds that are paid on the property tax will have a slight decrease. One expires in 2017, the other one expires in 2018, but we still have a bond in the general fund that continues to grow. That's the 2023, um, number. But what does $100,000 of increase in property tax do? We don't know if there's going to be a property tax freeze or not. The last page is actually something that we were just discussing, and that deals with our debt, just as we keep on reiterating to people, it comes down. But part of that discussion that we just had, our highest recent bond was about $8 million. That was Myers and some other infrastructure that we had. And the other one is about $7.4 million, and that one is on a property tax levy that does expire, as I said, in 2017. But again, that one was a lot of infrastructure that we didn't before. So, with that, um, I know we need these parameters because, again, we're already working on some of the budget. So, again, this is really the kickoff for the council to understand where we're coming from. With that, I turn that over to Ms. Gallagher.
Ms. Gallagher, the floor is yours.
Good morning.
It, it will be in about a half an hour.
She's on time sometime.
Kidding. Uh, really just to touch on where, um, Mr. Crumstock left off is that this is the kickoff. We basically wrap up the budget and then work on the next budget. So, we also are working on the audit as well. And with that, we'll be giving some preliminary financial, uh, numbers next week at the next city council meeting, as where as 2014 is looking. But what we wanted to do first is let you know that we're setting up the budget right now, looking at the capital plan. And then, and now between July, the, the Ad-Hoc Committee for Capital Approvements will be meeting, and then in August, as you know, we present the capital plan to the city council, and then in September is the proposed budget. But why we bring this now, of course, as we mentioned, is if we can signal intentions sooner than later, it's very helpful. We put together a whole bunch of information, and we're happy to bring back anything at a certain point. The March Committee, the whole meeting will be important because we are working on a pretty comprehensive survey and trying to get some news articles and other information about what are other municipalities doing right now for road funding, and I think it'll be very important to look at. So, with that, we, we just kind of wanted to do some summary things now. I've got some points I wanted to cover at the end, but I just wanted to kick it off first, um, kind of where we go with things in the beginning as far as, um, our planning phases. Uh, we'll come back to you with a planning calendar and all that at some point. But just to begin with the general fund, obviously, we used to present that in the, um, capital plan. Now, we just present that, of course, some, as a forecast and the budget. Uh, with the, the general fund itself, uh, just preliminary estimates, we'll present more next week. We are looking at a little bit better than we had projected originally, uh, but we do have some still challenges, although we are, as, as Mr. Crumstock mentioned, uh, we still are funding pensions at 100% to fund, funding to year 2033 versus 2040. And when the pension funds have an actuarial rate of 7%, we come in below that. When the actuary runs the numbers, we'll, we'll see where we land on that for a tax levy. Um, but in terms of the general fund itself, we may have some challenges with the, um, upcoming state legislature and, and see where things go with that. Um, you know, with the, the general fund revenues itself, we have seen that we've stabilized overall. So, we're, we're, we know what our revenue pie is, and then our expenditure pie, we do have, of course, um, and it's on page 10 on the printed version. I don't know what in the electronic version, but I did put a note, um, we do have, obviously, uh, union contracts coming up, uh, so we have some personnel costs to think about. Uh, but 70%, 74% of the general fund's budget, or about $21 million of the general fund's budget for expenditures, are related to public safety, um, expenses for fire and police. So, remember that the largest makeup of that is really, is, uh, personnel costs related to, uh, public sector or public safety. Uh, and I put a note in here, it's similar to the- And I put a note in here, it's similar to the development of the 2014 budget, we probably will have a manager's hold, maybe not, but we put that in there just as we work through some bargaining agreements. So really, I didn't want to touch too much on the general fund, other than the fact that there are some stabilization of revenues, but we still, and I'll get into that in a moment, we do want to keep an eye on the ball with the Illinois General Assembly. Chargebacks, we've mentioned over and over, and I'll mention that in a moment, but they are something that we're still looking at to make sure that we're fully funding our chargebacks. And I'll touch on debt service in a moment. But I did want to turn to, and I don't know what electronic page number it is, but on my printed version, it's 11. We lined out about 10 key items and I'll run through those and I'll touch on parts of the packet from earlier within this. But one of the things that we're, again, mentioning at number one here, it says road funding in the March...
Page 49.
Oh, page 49, thank you. The March committee of the whole meeting, it'll be a very important committee of the whole, where we can look at what others are doing. Is there something new out there? This is kind of part three of our discussions. We had part one in July last year and part two in August. We also want to update our projections to see where we're looking at. When our, between the motor fuel tax fund, which is our state motor fuel tax funds into the city, and the local road funding, we have to remember that the road funding has home roof, motor fuel tax, road and bridge levy, a vehicle stickers, and a transfer from motor fuel tax. So the revenue pie is limited, when you think about it. It's about $1.5 million into the road fund. If you take away, you know, we've got, obviously, the local road funding and some of the other things like curb and outside curb replacement and also outside repair and maintenance things, we have to look at all these things and all the pieces of the pie. We're going to bring that back to you, but I did want to just touch on it and bring to your attention. And I'll touch on that next week with the financial report as well. But this really, tonight, is not so much for council input, but if you've got something you want to add or mention to us for the future, please let us know now or later. But definitely, we're just trying to bring you these items for your attention as we're crafting and developing these pieces of the capital plan and also the budget, because we're definitely working on those pieces now. The second item, and is very pointed out in the beginning, the, which is the property tax levy, and we did want to, we thought might be helpful, because we do this during the budget process, is that while we don't know our actuarial returns for police, fire, and I M R F, those reports don't come to us until summer. That's just the way things go. But we don't know that. But what we wanted to do, which is on electronic page 52, I did get that one. We did provide sort of, these aren't anything that we're proposing, it's not anything that staff is saying, but we wanted to say, what we know now is that the debt service is this amount. We pluck that in. If we take that out, we, you know, if you go down the scenarios there, the 2015 budget had a total property tax levy 12 million, one less the debt service. So there's your beginning point, if you want to say, without any increases for pension costs. There may, most likely, will be pension cost increases. So taking that out of the equation, we did want to just kind of look at, you know, if you add $200,000 to the property tax levy, what is it for a dollar amount and then the percent change? And I think it's good for you just to sort of be thinking about those things as we're looking at crafting and developing the budget. Again, we could bring this back further beyond or before the proposed budget in a different COW meeting to talk further as we get some numbers further on. But I think it's important for you to look at, if there's things that you want us to be developing and inputting in the budget, that might make the process a little bit easier on everybody in the fall. That way, you have all the numbers in front of you. And so we're just trying to get this information out in front of you. So that's the property tax levy. The one item that Mr. Crumstock also mentioned is that the 911 fund, that's something that staff is looking at. The last increase was about five years ago for the property tax levy for the 911 fund. We have seen quite an increase in infrastructure needs for radios. That fund balance is slim as well, and I think it's important to keep our eye on the ball on that. Utility rate study, number, item number three, it's something I've put in our weekly notes. We got a whole bunch of information back for Baxter and Woodman, the engineering firm that we have contracted to do the utility rate study. We are reviewing all of the data. That is something we're going to be looking at. Obviously, the basic budget parameters is, as Mr. Crumstock mentioned, 5% for water, 5% for sewer, and then 5% for stormwater. Refuge fund, which is a little bit aside to this, is rates would not be increased further than 3.25%. But that's just something we just put down, so we're keeping track of that. Total debt service outstanding, we've mentioned already, and I'm not going to put too much on that, other than the fact that we do want to keep an eye on the ball as far as when that debt service expires in 17, 18 from the property tax levy. Number five, debt service long-term projection from the general fund. We do want to show you, this was the, one of the bonds that was refunded, so we did save over the long term. But as you can tell, there is still an amount that comes out of the general fund to the debt service fund that repays our debt service. We want to keep an eye on that and it does increase over time. Number six, funding compensated absences. It's been touched on tonight. I think it's definitely something that, you know, obviously, we've made progress in 14. And then also, we, staff would propose also an amount for 2016. But again, city council can always make their intentions as well known as far as what their ideas and recommendations are as policy direction. Number seven, vehicle and equipment replacement repayment from the general fund. That's an item that we wanted to bring back. We've mentioned it and noted it on the budget and in the proposed, in the budget summaries. This is a $1 million vehicle replacement transfer to the general fund years ago. In our discussions with the credit rating agencies and also our city auditors, they have asked when that repayment might begin. And so what we have said is that we would be starting a repayment in 2016, the proposed budget. Number eight, fully funding chargebacks. You know, we've had many discussions with the Ad-Hoc Committee in making sure that, you know, obviously, vehicles, equipment, garage, building, and land fund, the primary source are chargebacks into those funds primarily from the general fund. And we want to make sure that we're keeping an eye on that. Number nine, possible threat to local government distributive funds. I think it was a very good, just as an aside, at the Chamber Lunch, I thought it was an excellent information from our local legislators about what's going on in Springfield. We're definitely, obviously, through the Northwest Municipal Conference, obviously, Mr. Crumstock and the mayor always keeps us involved in all of that. We really want to keep our eye on the ball on that. And then lastly, I just want to touch on the EAB tree removal and replacement program that the adopted budget does call for 220,000 in the tree removals and then another close to 100,000 for tree replacements. And also, the staff is proposing an amount that would be in the 2016 budget as well. But again, these are items for you to review and if there's something that, you know, obviously, get in touch with Mr. Crumstock to make sure that you want to see something in the budget itself or change or modification. That's what we're here for.
I guess I would start with two quick things. Number one, I agree that the helpful input from our state legislators yesterday was helpful. And I think the most helpful thing is something that has also been repeated at the Northwest Municipal Conference meetings. There's going to be a whole lot of talk between now and May as to what the state is going to do. We would all do well to remember that none of that is decided until May. And so perhaps, as they go through their negotiating, we're certainly not saying that they might not follow through on some of their proposals, because there is going to be a more interesting dynamic in Springfield than there has been in a while. But there are going to be, as it was put by our state legislators yesterday, a lot of opening bids. I would not want to see us run scurrying around based on, oh my goodness, they said they're going to sweep the entire LGDF fund. We don't need to adjust our budget yet, just when those discussions happen. Let's let this process go as normally as possible. I say that, number one, because we don't know what's going to happen. And number two, do we really want to work against ourselves and have people making the argument in the legislature in May? Hey, you know, this really wouldn't be that painful, because I've talked to our municipality people and they're already budgeting for this change. So it really won't be, I think that works against ourselves. So I think we need to have a healthy balance of being wary about what they might do without making instantaneous changes about a trial balloon that somebody in the legislature happens to float, even if that person might be the governor. Secondly, I think with the way that we have turned out every year to the credit of the staff, we have built back our reserves very quickly and very responsibly. I think one way to take our foot off the gas on the residents, now that we've gotten ourselves back to a level of significantly more health, might be to dial the conservative dial back a click or two on some of the calculations that we've been running over the last three to four years in terms of where our revenues are going to come in. We have always said we do it very conservatively. I think that's excellent and that's what we should do. We had the last two surpluses be more than 2 million bucks adding to our reserves. We are at a level where we don't need to add that much. And so I'm certainly not saying, let's get rid of that way of budgeting. I'm saying my preference would be to dial some of those formulas back a click or two and that would allow us to continue the parameters that we've used of natural growth, but still be able to recognize, hey, our little budget that we've adopted that says we're only going to be 400,000 to the plus came in at 2.1 million one year. And our little budget that said we were going to be nearly balanced came in way high another year. Perhaps adjusting those formulas a tiny bit might give us some of the room that we need and not keep these going. Because at some point, we have to wonder, are the residents starting to be overtaxed once our revenues are right in the midpoint of our own adopted budget policy? That can be a way to do it. Those are a couple of my thoughts. Anybody else have anything they want to throw in at the moment? Mr. Cannon?
Melissa, I just want to ask a quick question on number three, utility rate. I don't see anything in here about the new Jawa line from Alhara. Is that going to affect us this year? The new line that's going on the toll road, or is that just kind of be part of our rate structure?
That's not going to affect us. I can actually answer that. But that's not going to affect us this year, but it is part of our rate structure future on, and Jawa is actually working on that, because when they worked on the $70 million iDOT and presentation, that's all part of their projection for future stuff, how you pay for that. There's more discussions at Jawa on future and other things, too, but at this point in time, for the 2016, it's just how we have it with the 5% and then the city Chicago Jawa rate.
So is Jawa going to pick up the loan for that and then we'll just pay them back? Or do we get our own loan for that eventually?
No, we'll all be paying that back to Jawa itself.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Beeston?
Yeah, the only question I had for staff is the $1 million transfer from vehicle and equipment to general fund. Could the council just elect to say it's not a transfer, which is permanent, we don't want to, we don't want a transfer back?
The council can do anything it wants, but I would offer the thought that it would be remarkably unwise to do so, because if for no other reason, when we get these credit reviews or bond rating reviews that we get, to be able to say that we have not forgotten that and so forth and so on, is something that has tangentially come up.
Okay, I was just asking whether we could do it or not.
Well, the council can do that.
Can, but it's not the wisest thing for us to do.
And I'm being diplomatic in phrasing it that way.
Yeah, well, that's all, that's all I wanted to know.
Fair enough. Then the answer is we can do it.
I just wanted to know if my thought process was right.
All right.
Thank you.
Mr. Judd?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do hear what you say about dialing back the ultra-conservative. But the flip side, I guess, is one of the things that I think we need to be cognizant of is, you know, we had a conversation about not enough money for the roads this year. Disregard all the other things that, you know, may or may not disappear. I think that, you know, based on just the capital projects we saw outlined a number of years ago, if I remember right, it was, you know, $50 million or something like that. We've got a police station, we've got a city hall, we've got, who knows with the fire stations, we have public works, old public works. You know, I don't know about, I do agree, I don't want to overtax the residents, but I also don't want to be penny wise and pound foolish in the sense that, you know, I think what we need to do is continue...
Could I just ask if we're talking about the same thing? When I say dial the conservatism back, that provides more money in the budget.
No, I, no.
Okay, all right.
No, I'm just saying, moving forward. I mean, I'm not, I don't know that, I'm in the camp of just natural growth. Obviously, I haven't been in the camp of natural growth the last couple of years. But I think there's a significant difference between, for lack of a better thing, I'll use Schaumburg, you know, building a convention center, building a, you know, having a ball club, having an airport. We don't have those things. So if staff came and said, hey, we want to borrow all this money and, you know, design a convention center, you know, buy Woodfield Gardens, tear it down and do a convention center there, yeah, that's not something that I think we need to be doing. But I think if we look at all the infrastructure things that we need to take care of, you know, we need to figure out where that funding is going to come from. Relying strictly on natural growth, I don't think will get us there. It has over the course of the last few years, but I don't think it'll continue. I could be wrong. I've been wrong a lot. But that being said, I'm not in the camp of just a natural growth. I think, you know, we've talked about incremental steps and whether or not we agree that incremental steps, 100, 200, or a million is irrelevant. But I think we need to look at incremental steps to figure out, even if we say we're going to do a possible one-year deal that we're going to raise taxes 500,000, it's all going to go completely into the road fund. We can always take that back off the tax roll next year if we, if the economy turns south or something, kind of like what we did with a couple of the, when we raised permit fees. You know, we changed all the permit fees and said, well, let's just do it half so that, because I think it was 2009, if I remember, we didn't want to, we didn't know where the economy is really going to go, we didn't want to shut things down, and we didn't want to cause problems that, from that perspective. So maybe we do something like that or add 100,000 or 200, whatever the number might be. Again, it's irrelevant. But I think just relying on natural growth, we can see, just from the conversation that we started tonight with the road fund, not counting all the other infrastructure things we have to take care of, I just don't see that it's going to get us there. Again, I could be wrong, but I'd be looking for incremental, you know, even if we have to do incremental across the board when it comes to city stickers, to a gas tax, to whatever, to pay for the things that we want, not pay for things we don't necessarily want. That's kind of where I'll be on, you know, moving forward. Thank you.
Further comments or questions from the council?
May I add?
Certainly, Ms. Gallagher.
To Alderman Judd's point, I think that it would be helpful to staff if, if Mr. Crumstock knew and I knew ahead of time if vehicle stickers are going to be proposed. If we need to bring this back at a later date before the proposed budget is presented, we could do that in terms of what else do you want to see in the budget or what are we, you know, you've mentioned conservative estimates. We've been conservative, but we've also been pretty close to our estimates as well. We've also had some expenditure changes and reductions, so that's helped the general fund. So we haven't been ultra-conservative, I don't believe. We've been conservative to a degree and I'll let Mr. Crumstock take it from here.
And there's actually one other thing, and I just reiterate, we've been very fortunate in the last few years with some one-time, one-time revenues. And the best ones would be real estate transfer, where a piece of property sold, and they've been considerable. And that's some of the stuff that, just keep it in, we keep it in our minds. But again, part of this discussion is just so we get everybody else's mind and we understand what people are saying. And that's part of when we reiterate and we've had that discussion, what should be true chargebacks. We're very conscious of what people say. The same thing is, we do look at the big picture. It's not just general fund. We're looking at every fund. And you look at two years ago when we had negative funds, the general fund, because some of one time in how it was growing, the council listened to staff and rightfully sold. to staff and rightfully so, made those changes, and that's why the credit ratings have changed. And as Mayor Rooney alluded to, a lot of those discussions that Ms. Gallagher and I have with the rating, trust me, they don't forget anything, and they're looking at some of that stuff, and they look at how you're paying things off, and when's your next thing, and that's part of the discussions, and it's just not like we do all this work, we send it to them. The calls and sometimes the face-to-face with some of these groups are pretty revealing and painful sometimes, but you guys don't have to sit through those.
Further thoughts to offer at this point in the game? All right, the opening salvo is, there it is, right there. So we'll call that item number six, which became item number seven. So now, item number seven, which is the final item of the night. Still one more left. Sorry about that.
Are you teasing me? Only one left?
Well, there's one left. Item number seven, the employee advisory committee update. I see Mr. Vogt coming to the podium. Mr. Crumstock, is there an introduction from your microphone, or do we go straight to Mr. Vogt?
Right before Mr. Vogt actually starts, and Ms. Gallagher is also up here, but Mr. Vogt will do most of the conversation. I just want to reiterate, this is, part of this packet is for future EACs as each little piece comes back to the council. But again, what I reiterated last time, every time that we change things, it gets more and more difficult when you're talking to this party, or this group, or this. Personally, as the city manager and even in the HR world, you always prefer having one way that you're talking about that everything is standardized. But again, with that intro, tonight, you're back with the longevity, and again, this is all part of the package, hopefully, and hopefully the council will see those questions at the end where it's only part of the discussion.
Mr. Vogt.
Thank you, Barry, and thank you, Mayor. Get right to the chase. The employee advisory committee has met on several occasions since the last time we were here talking to the committee of the whole in November. We've talked about at one point or another over the last couple of months, all of the issues that had been brought up previously for the committee to look at. We decided recently to try to focus on one issue at a time to bring back to the committee of the whole. So tonight, we're just dealing with longevity pay, and as Barry mentioned, in terms of looking at other issues, there's a schedule at the end of this report in terms of what we're proposing to add to the committee of the whole discussions for March, April, May, and so on. From a longevity standpoint, based on the direction of the committee of the whole in November, and then looking, again, with discussion and consideration of the employee advisory committee, we desire that this topic, as well as the others, be looked at as individual issues, but as a comprehensive program or awareness or considerations to not necessarily cast votes and make them, make any changes as standalone, but as a whole in terms of the employee benefit package. We think that's a very significant consideration that we ask of the committee of the whole and of the council. As a reiteration from November, the direction that the city council gave to the employee advisory committee is that longevity as a topic to be considered for change would, as proposed from a, the current percentage calculations on employee salaries back to what we had prior to 2006 as a flat rate, that it would impact all full-time current and future employees, that it would be a transition from a percentage back to the flat fixed dollar amount, and that there was no need to spend a lot of time targeting specific financial amounts for the proposed, proposal to change to a flat and fixed dollar amount. Those were the directions or consensus based on the questions that were presented at the November committee of the whole meeting. There's a number of statistics that we provided here within the report. I won't dwell on those, go into them unless there's specific questions on them, or anybody wishes us to provide discussion, as well as the surveys that were done and the updates with regards to other communities, both from the Sikkets Report and those in the areas where we stand for the city of Rolling Meadows in comparison to others. The employee advisory committee went back and focused on the scenario. One is presented in the packet, that the status quo is presented there based on the percentage system. Our desire as a committee is to try to make existing employees that are already within the longevity system whole. That led us to the development of scenario number two, to change longevity from that percentage that we currently have to a flat fixed rate amount, and to best keep whole not only what the employee's current benefit is, but to look at it from the standpoint of what it's currently costing the city for longevity pay and compare it to what would be a similar cost brought us to that schedule where the 10 years of service would be at $2,250 a year, 15 years of service, $2,500 per year, 20 years of service, $2750 per year, and at 25 years of service and beyond, $3,000 per year. The questions that we then have of, at this point of the committee of the whole, is does the city council indeed wish to change from the current longevity pay listed within scenario one, which is the percentage? If yes, to changing to a fixed dollar amount, does the council committee wish to accept the proposal that's presented in scenario two? And if the answer to that is no, the employee advisory committee requests that some direction be given so that the committee can go back and develop a schedule with the direction, whether it's to use averages from a variety of sources such as other communities, development of scales, or there's some arbitrary determination numbers that the council wishes to develop, but to send that back so that the employee advisory committee can continue and hopefully finish its work on this item. So that's the extent of the work that we've done. As I said, there's other things that, topics that we've talked about, and we'll present those at future months.
All right. Then first of all, are there questions of clarification from Mr. Vogt of what's printed or what he's presented from the mic? Mr. Cannon.
Fred, as you know, I'm not as good with numbers as some of the people on the table are, but in scenario two, it looks to me like the insinuation by the numbers you've used there is that every employee is making $100,000. Because your flat fee is $2,250, you've turned a percentage into a hard number, but I don't think we have many people that are making $100,000 right now in their first 10 years of service, are there?
No, there would, there would be limited to supervisors.
Well, you went from 2.25% of their salary to $2,250 is a guaranteed number. Isn't that using $100,000 as the base, then?
The point is fairly taken that those numbers, correct, those numbers all turn out to be the established percentage amounts of $100,000. I suppose to give the committee their due, I believe what they're building in, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Vogt, is that they don't expect these things to be raised, and so the general idea is if they're going to stay stagnant for a period of 10 to 15 to 20 to 25 years, they want to set them at a level. And I'm not saying I support the approach, I'm just saying I believe this is the thinking. It's got to be something, whereas it gets eaten away a bit every year from inflation and such, it's got to hold up because they don't expect it to be raised.
Mayor, that's pretty spot on with what the discussions have been and the calculations, given that one has to establish a benchmark or a spot. That being said, that, yeah, we wouldn't expect, given that there is a desire or a proposal to move away from the percentage, which is something that changes if we're going to freeze it at a certain amount, that typically would stay that way for a lengthy period of time. If one chose to use a lower amount, then that would have an adverse effect on those higher in the compensation range than would those in the lower. One could probably make the argument to take an average of that as well, if one wanted to, you know, continue to run some calculations to get to a point where there's comfort level.
But I believe the intention of Mr. Cannon's question is also correct, though, that those are remarkably high numbers compared to what's being paid this year, that they might get more reasonable as time goes by, but for right now, that's a darn good jump for a whole lot of folks. Is that?
Yeah, because I guess the question, I thought part of this scenario here was we were trying to keep our costs down in this area, not actually increase them. With this scenario, in my opinion, and I don't know numbers, so maybe I'm shooting off the hip here, but my guess would be if we put this down on paper, we would actually end up spending more money on longevity next year than we are this year.
I believe that's a correct assessment.
And I guess that would defeat the purpose of why this was brought to the table, in my opinion. So I support the idea of going to some fixed number, but not that number.
As what was presented with, and perhaps Melissa can correct me if I'm misspeaking for the finance department, is looking at what the city is currently, year in and year out in recent years, paying out in longevity pay as an aggregate, that this schedule would stay within roughly what that budget is. It wouldn't increase from an overall standpoint. At least that's what our employee advisory committee is discussing.
I guess I would want to see that.
Let me ask you a question.
I don't know how that can be so.
Could you give me an, so you have 31 people that are in this pay structure right now at the lowest level, right? Is that correct from what you have right here?
Well, not necessarily at the lowest level. No, but there are 31, correct.
The lowest tier, I'm sorry, I'm not trying to.
There are 31 employees of the 59 Tier One that are currently receiving.
Could you just, Mike, would you give me a high and low of what those people would be making right now, just a ballpark even, a guesstimate even? Is it between like 30 and 90? Is it between 75 and 100?
Probably the majority would be between 50 and 100.
Okay.
Because you'd have to have the minimum of 10 years of service.
But so then we would switch to this. I guess I don't understand, in that comment you just made, Fred, I guess I would like to see those hard numbers, and if that's, if you guys feel that way, I guess you need to educate me because it doesn't make sense to me, but maybe I'm wrong.
I believe the finance department could generate that to the committee and present that back to the committee.
I agree. I would like to see it as well because I'm just not seeing how that can be so. And I'm certainly not saying it can't be, but I would need figures to see it. Mr. DeEstes.
The question, does the city council wish to change from the current longevity pay to the listed in scenario one? Change from that, from percentages to a flat dollar amount, my answer is yes. Do I want to take example scenario two? My answer is no. If no, what should you be sent back? Why not just take an average of everybody that's in there right now and say, "There it is. Here's 31 people at this price point, and their average rate is this much, and come up with a number." I mean, it's as good as anything else. I mean, because I agree with Mike, taking $100,000, and every one of these things is shooting us in the foot.
Mr. Judd.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Obviously, as I was probably the purveyor of this whole scenario, you know, I've been a proponent of moving to dollar amounts versus percentages. One question I have, and I apologize, Barry, that I didn't ask you before, but you should, my guess is you know it anyway, if you don't, that's fine, too, is we pay these people, let's say it's 3%, whatever it is, is, does that get paid out, that gets paid out every week, per se, right? And does that factor into their pension?
Remember that pensions are specifically on the salary overall. So again.
But that would be longevity portion of salary, correct?
Again, part of what they look for is the base salary, and again, how pension calculations are done for police and fire are somewhat different from the pension calculations that are done for IMRF employees. So IMRF employees, it looks at the monthly, then it looks near when you actually get ready, retire, how they calculate the FERE. So again, a little bit different for each of those pensions, how they're calculated, if it's just base, or is it based in longevity that's actually part of it?
Okay, that doesn't answer my question. Is IMRF based in longevity?
IMRF, again, it's a monthly pay, so hypothetically, you got overtime for snow patrol that goes into it. Your FERE is going to go up a little bit because with that overtime, that's going to be put into the overall number.
Okay, so let's assume a person doesn't get any overtime. Is the, maybe I'm missing the answer, and if I am, I apologize. Is the longevity pay getting included in pension?
For the IMRF.
Yeah, it's all I care about because we're only talking about IMRF right now.
Yes.
So it does. So I mean, I guess the two things I would look at, is, you know, we've had numerous conversations, you know, and I've heard a lot of times, people say, you know, "We don't want to be the highest, we don't want to be the lowest." You know, if we look through the scenario, and I do understand the argument that longevity, you know, that there's industrial knowledge, but I guess one of the questions I would have is if somebody was here, glad they're over there, if somebody, Fred, if somebody was here for 20 years in whatever position, and that person would leave and you would look to, per se, fill that position, are the odds, are the odds very good that you would pay that person the same amount of money?
No.
Okay. So I guess my contention is, is by default, we pay longevity pay. Because if you're here 20 years and you're making X amount of dollars, you know, you've gotten that, and we're not, you know, when somebody comes in and we just hire them, we don't hire them at 100 grand, you know, for most practical purposes. We hire them at a lower level, they go through the ranks, and they come up through the system, correct?
That would normally be true, but depending on the position, it could be, were, if it were a supervisor, that replacement could be compensated there.
Right, and most logically, I would assume that you would hire a supervisor that has had experience elsewhere. So therefore, that pay is commensurate with the experience elsewhere. So maybe it's not technically longevity here, but it's, you're, we're paying for that industrial knowledge already, is my point, that because people have been here for a long period of time, they're being paid already for their longevity based on the fact that they've been here a long time and they make a lot of money. I'm not trying to discount it and say, "Forget it, I don't want to pay any longevity." I've never said that. But I think one could make the argument, and if you look at all these communities, I mean, there's a lot of them that don't pay anything, and based on the fact that, you know, we want to be, you know, fair, but not necessarily the highest, not necessarily the lowest, I think the numbers that are proposed clearly put us at the highest. I think the highest I saw was Morton Grove, I think is $2,100. And don't get me wrong, you get some that, I forget, it's Lake somebody or whatever, is paying $45 or something. Lake Forest, you know, 19-plus years, you get a whopping $60. Okay, if you're going to pay longevity, that's, that's kind of ridiculous, in my opinion. So that being said, what I'd be inclined to do is I, obviously, I want to move to a dollar amount. My proposal would be is, you know, I don't remember what I came up with before, I think it was 10, 1,000, 1,200, 1,400, 1,600, or somewhere in that general ballpark. But what I'd also like to do is move this to, you know, either a quarterly or semi-annual or annual payment, so you get it all in one shot, so it starts to detract away from the pension obligation. Because would that help that, would that reduce the pension obligation at all, or no? Does that make a difference?
No, that's so nominal.
Okay, well, if it doesn't make a difference, it doesn't make a difference. So yeah, I mean, I'd be, you know, I'd want to reduce that number. I'm fine with 10 years, 15, 20, 25. I don't see any reason to, you know, go any higher, AKA, you know, eliminate the 10 years. So 10, 15, 20, 25 is fine by me, but I'd be more inclined for, you know, maybe 1,200, 1,400, 1,600, and 1,800 bucks or something like that. It still keeps us basically at the high end of the deal, but it provides a fair amount of relief for us. So that's kind of my opinion on it. Thank you.
Mr. Major. Thank you. I had the same thought, and I don't consider this, first of all, I guess I conceptualized this.
guess I conceptualize these as like a year-end bonus type of thing. I didn't think they were tucked inside each pay period. So I agree with Mr. Judd. I'd be inclined to make them a year-end bonus, just so it's simpler, and it's a, gosh, it just seems like more of a reward for that longevity. And the other thing is, I also, when I started going through these, I remember when I first came on board and heard that phrase, we don't want to be the lowest, we don't want to be the highest, we want to be somewhere in the middle. I thought that was kind of an oversimplification. But in this case, you know, just looking through those other salaries, I don't know if I'd go with Ulrich and Judd's proposed levels, or even kick it up from his, down from what's proposed, 1,500, 2,000, 2,500, 3,000. But certainly dial it down a little bit, because yeah, at this point, looking at our peers, and I'm just talking about people who touch our boundaries, either they don't have them, or they're much lower than ours. So I'd like to, I'd like to, as Mr. DeEstes pointed out, there are three questions in front of us. The third is conditional, and I would say, no, I don't agree with, I want to do Scenario Two with flat dollar amounts, but I don't like the ones in front of me. Thanks.
Yes, I believe we could probably cut to the chase and go there. There's not a need to address number two, because this wouldn't be in the ballpark if the council didn't pass it on. And so, you know, therefore, it's kind of like, the chief didn't have to put the two-fire-station option in here, because it wasn't in the council direction. Keeping it the same was not in the council direction, so I think that's a safe assumption. The question, though, is, I believe we could get general agreement that whatever the numbers are going to turn out to be, these are too high. May I ask if there's anybody at the table who disagrees with that? Okay. So then I guess the question would be, do we wish to decide on a set of numbers to send back to the Employee Advisory Committee, or do we want to ask the Employee Advisory Committee to come back with something lower? This isn't exactly a negotiation, and so I don't know, the counteroffer in here and so, and all the rest is really very productive. But, you know, we could also say, we'll take these under advisement, and we'll set it where we want to set it. I mean, there's different ways to go. Mr. DeEstes? And then Mr. Vogt?
I like 1,000, 1,500, 2,000, 2,500.
Okay, got it. Mr. Vogt?
I just wanted to point out that, you know, in general terms, in terms of different communities setting longevity rates, one never really knows how they determine those, much the same as we don't know unless we go back through our historical archives and police and fire contract negotiations, Me Too, and the like, as to how and why rates were set as what they are. So I just, again, and part of our Employee Advisory Committee discussion was to try to caution against too much arbitrariness, but yet have some, I guess, scientific numbers to that. So in appreciation of consideration, if it comes back to the committee, to take another look at that, too.
And kind of along the lines that Mr. Banjer made, even that kind of thinking can be taken to a ridiculous extreme, because it does seem, at one level of thinking, to be fairly silly to say, we don't want to be the lowest, we don't want to be the highest, we want to be in the middle. There is a neighboring community of ours where their contractual language says they will get 20 surrounding communities, put them in a list from high to low, and they're, they will be set so that they are number 10, or number 11, I forget which. And that's actually in the code. So kind of trying to find a formula can also get ridiculous. And so staying with a general ballpark, I think, is a whole lot more productive. Mr. Cannon?
Mr. Mayor, could I suggest, in light of the fact that none of us here, I don't think have an exact number of what we're paying right now, if maybe the council got that information, so we could better determine? I mean, I don't, I don't think we want any of our loyal employees to be upset. We want to be fair, but I mean, I don't think we need to make this more generous than we are already.
I believe that is a fine suggestion for taking a look at, where does that come out, so that we can do something a little bit less arbitrary than just coming up with dollar amounts. And I believe if we can maybe even kind of direct it back to the key thought that the Employee Advisory Committee has asked about, we'll keep coming back to different subjects. So that's something that could be tacked on to one of those discussions. My own layman's interpretation of the key thought is just simply a request, don't pass any ordinances until we settle, until we talk through all these issues, which I believe we could certainly grant, since they're not talking about taking all year, the timeframe goes to like June. Once we consider something settled, let's just consider it settled, without asking staff to draw up anything until the final thing is put together. I believe that's rational. I believe that's certainly a legitimate request. And unless there's any strong sentiment against it, I think it's certainly something we could grant. And that would give us the ability to get the numbers that Mr. Cannon is talking about, and then make a more informed decision when we come back to one of these discussions. Mr. Judd?
My only thought with that is, I get the one complete package, but I guess my only thinking is, is that, you know, you don't, I don't want to be locked into a position where you end up with four things that you voted against three of them, but yet, you know, now to get the fourth one, you have to vote for it. That would be my only concern. I don't know if they're talking about coming out with whatever, four, five, six, whatever comes out to be, different ordinances all October 1st. In other words, it would be each one, so that you could, you know, it's not, because what I don't want to do is end up with a negotiation thing. Well, you know, we gave you on the years of service, and this, but now we want this back on this, you know what I'm saying?
I completely agree.
That's my only concern with that. I get it that it'd be a lot easier, because obviously this will take effect January 1st. The next one will take effect January 1st. To make them all take effect January 1st is fine, I don't have a problem with that. But I don't want to get in a situation where we start negotiating between proposals. And the only thing I would say is, is, you know, coming up with a number, the only thing I would request is if we, if it goes to the AC, that they bring us more than one, like here, they just said, you know, they give us four numbers for, you know, basically this is one scenario, where they could say, you know, Scenario Two would have been, you know, ultimately, DeEstes is, you know, 1,000, 1,500, 2,000, 2,500, and then, you know, so we can kind of work, and, you know, that gives them a little bit of input as to what they feel might be reasonable along the line as well. In other words, if we come up and they say, we've come up with these numbers, they didn't work out exactly perfect, but, you know, we think 1,250, 1,500, 1,750, and 2,000 is reasonable, we'll take, we think those are good, you know, we don't really, do we really want to go and say, well, we want another 250, or whatever? So at least this way, we've got kind of a, they've given us a couple scenarios to work with as well, if that's what they so desire, versus, like you say, you know, we start off at 1,000, whatever, and then all of a sudden, they're here, you know, go back and forth. That's not, I don't really think the intent of it. It's just to kind of come to a general consensus, what's fair for everybody, but yet ultimately is fair for the residents as well.
Agreed, in general. I do think that if I'm a member of the committee, my thought process might be similar to something that's been expressed here at the table before. If we pitch them three, 1,000, 1,500, blah, 750, 1,250, blah, 500, 1,000, blah, they're just going to take the lowest one. So, you see what I mean? If I'm a member of the committee, I would go, why would I want to propose multiples, because I just know they're going to take the lowest. So perhaps, maybe if we just, if we just stick with, let's get the information about the dollars, and then maybe we can come back at this again during another Employee Advisory Committee discussion. I don't think, from the writing here, if we say in general, we certainly accept the idea that we're not going to be passing ordinances or resolutions piecemeal, but we'll wait, I believe that would be enough to assure the committee that this is good faith, and we can keep moving.
And they've got, and everybody's got time.
Exactly. Is there any objection to that? Good. And without objection, it's actually tomorrow. Is there any objection to going home?
Melissa?
Yes.
Tomorrow.
We are adjourned.
Thank you.